Board meeting to order the virtual meeting via Zoom. And Paul, if you can read your stuff at the front of it.
What? Clerk of the Planning Board, I'm requested to read the following statement. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the June 9th, 2020 public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting, send a comment or question to the Chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments to be read into the record at appropriate points in the meeting.
There's a lot of background noise. I don't know what's causing it. Can you?
Me. Three, additional public comment may be sent in advance to the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may be submitted via email. Submitted email comments and documents will make part of the meeting record and may be read into the record, summarized, or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair. Four, applicants, their representatives, and individuals with enforcement matters before the Planning Board may appear remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals with a motion, excuse me, enforcement matters before the Planning Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting to the planning@falmouthma.gov so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing.
Thank you, Paul. The first item on the agenda is Planning Board reorganization. We have in the past done this at the end of the meeting so that the meeting can proceed as it usually would instead of bumping it on a newly-elected chairman. So if the Board concurs with moving that item to the end of the agenda, may I have a motion to do so?
Yes.
So move.
Is there a second?
Jim, I can hear you and see you, but I can't join.
Okay, I just want to report that. Just because I'm in the meeting. I'm sorry, I seconded. I should be at the meeting. I was just checking. Bob Leary's trying to get in. He can hear and see us, but for some reason, he's having trouble getting in.
Okay.
Just gave him a call. Do you want me to take a minute and try to help him, or do you want to proceed?
Okay, no, there's a picture on the screen now. It says Vivian S. Wine. The sound has been muted.
Okay, there he is.
Hi, Bob. Hi, Viv. Okay, so it has been moved and seconded to move the Planning Board reorganization to the end of the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stay. Okay. So it is, we'll move that to the end. Mr. Clerk-Secretary, the next is the minutes, May 12th, 2020.
I recommend approval of the minutes of May 12th, 2020, as per.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, everybody's in favor. The next on the agenda is Planning Board decision. The applicant is William Chalkley. Site plan review application for a detached accessory apartment located at 404 Hayway Road, Holmes &amp; McGrath. And I need somebody to read the decision, please. Make a motion.
I'll make the motion. Motion, June 9th, 2020 draft motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of William Chalkley for the construction of a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit at 404 Hayway Road under Article 39 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for the plan entitled "Plan of Proposed Accessory Structure Prepared for William and Kristen Chalkley for Lot 14", number 404 Hayway Road, Falmouth, prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, Inc., Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, dated March 4th, 2020, scale 1-inch, equals 20 feet, along with construction details and existing floor plans of the primary residence, architecturals of the proposed accessory unit, floor plan of the proposed accessory unit, elevation, and photographs with the following findings. The applicant, William Chalkley, seeks to construct a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit located at 404 Hayway Road, parcel zone Agricultural A, AGA, and located in the Water Resource Protection District in the Great Pond Coastal Pond Overlay and contains 60,824 square feet of land. The proposed accessory dwelling unit is approximately 712 square feet. The primary residence is approximately 1,793 square feet and contains three bedrooms, and the accessory dwelling unit is a one-bedroom. The proposed percentage of total floor area of the accessory apartment is 39.71% of the total finished floor area of the principal structure. The Planning Board review does not include building code review, and the Board defers to the Building Commission as to issues related to building code. The Planning Board considered the above referenced referrals in the applicant's response and plan revisions in its decision in this matter. The Board will condition its decision accordingly. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-23I of the zoning bylaw. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section 241-30-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year are owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the Building Commission or signed by the property owner attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment have been owner-occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both during the five months the owner occupancy may be absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months, and weekly, monthly rentals, summer rentals, so-called, are restricted and prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, the accessory apartment structure will be assigned the address 404A Hayway Road. Engineering will assign the address when we sign the building permit. Five, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence for Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance. 404A should be posted on the structure visible as you come up the driveway as well as posted at the driveway intersection with Hayway Road. Other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area at a minimum. There's something, that just, we're missing something there. Can somebody fill that in?
Tom?
Is that a separate condition? Oh, wait a minute. I see, it's part of six. Okay, let me read six. Condition six, the applicant will install dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Is there a second, please?
So we need to strike that on?
Yeah, correct.
Five, yeah.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion of this decision? Okay. All in favor, and please show, well, please show your hands. Paul, are you in favor?
I'm in favor, yes.
Okay, so all seven of us present are in favor of this. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, it's a public meeting. The applicant is Borrego Solar, definitive plan application to create a right-of-way on Town of Falmouth property that will provide access to the Town of Falmouth property and Lawrence Lynch's abutting property located at Zero Locust Field Road, map number 230201001, Holmes &amp; McGrath. And I understand that Mr. Kirk and Mr. McGrath will be joining this meeting. So Thomas, if you could, yes, thank you. And Mr. Kirk, I want to thank you for your very descriptive of the past actions letter to us. It was quite helpful. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I'm glad it was helpful. I'm sorry that I have to tell you that I got a phone call from Mike McGrath, and he was not able to gain access to the meeting through the internet process. I don't know whether it's my age and his age, but we're having all trouble technologically. So, and Mike obviously is the one who can address issues relating to the waivers and any technical problems. The plan was, you know, if I was needed, I could talk a little bit about the prior history here, and I'm still ready, willing, and able to do that. But in view of the fact that, at least, Pat has a grasp of the prior history, and maybe everybody else does, I may or may not need to do that. I'll be glad to do that. But I guess the bottom line is, we're, in any event, going to be needing to continue the meeting to another date so that Mike McGrath can participate as planned. So the Board's pleasure, whatever you want to do. If you want to hear anything from me, I'd be glad to, just do a brief history of the prior proceedings, and then if there's any technical questions, then those would have to be answered by Mike at a later date.
That's great. I think what I will do is to start off by giving an overview, because it's been a while, and I'd like people who are viewing this, the TV, to understand what this is. So give a little bit of a summation here. This easement was granted at town meeting, and the applicant is continuing the process to create the right-of-way that was approved to allow the applicant to use the easement of town land. The applicant is seeking to create a one-lot subdivision. The total area to be subdivided is 2.63 plus or minus acres and is shown as Lot 4. The remaining 3.55 plus minus acres is shown as Lot 5. The lots will be accessed off of Locust Field Road through an existing roadway that will be approximately 44 feet in width within approximately 22-foot wide pavement. The roadway will be paved from the edge of Locust Field Road for approximately 200 plus or minus feet, and the remainder of the road is proposed to be gravelled that will be blended with the pavement. So, and Tom showed the area, and he's got the mapping up there of the area. I think to move this along, there were a number of waivers that were requested, and I think to give Mr. Kirk and Mr. McGrath the sense of our Board, it might be wise if we go to those waivers and consider them. Does that make sense to the Board?
Yeah, Pat?
Yes.
I'm just feeling this is kind of disjointed.
Okay.
Because we don't have Mr. McGrath here, and to bring him in at a later date after we've discussed this and then have to go through the whole thing again seems to me to be very awkward and not very, not a very...
That we just postpone it since Mr. McGrath can't be with us?
Well, I think it would be a much easier meeting that way, a much more, you know, concise and comprehensive, because I just feel, as I'm, I've looked through all this material and read through it all, and I thought that there would be an exchange between Mike and the Board, as usual. But not to be able to have him present seems to be maybe a waste of the Board's time and Mr. Kirk to not have everyone present for a presentation.
Okay, Paul?
Since Mike is having trouble getting on, perhaps we can ask Adriana to contact him if his telephone is provided, and she could lead him into this discussion. We have advertised it. It is a public hearing, and to put it off would be a shame. And we've discussed this numerous times in the past, so I'd be in favor of trying to get Mike to tie in on this issue.
FCTV should be able to do that, I would think.
If I may?
Yes. Tom?
So, Mr. McGrath, Mr. Kirk, and I have had an awful lot of conversations.
Tom, Kevin Clower, you may not have seen that. It just flashed on the screen. He said he believes that the password protection is still on for the meeting.
I did just see that. I did go ahead and remove that. So if that was the issue, then it should be all set.
If I may?
Yes, Tom.
So Mike McGrath, Mr. Kirk, and I have had a number of conversations about this particular development. As you know, as is previously discussed, the reason that we are doing this subdivision at all is to make the driveway for Borrego Solar into a subdivision road to improve access to the site and to improve access to to the town's property as well. It's a bit unusual in some of those circumstances because it's somebody else's subdivision on our property. And some of the things that you see, if I can go back to the plan for just a moment, include things like this drainage easement. If I can get my cursor on it. So this is a drainage easement right here. It's not on the property. It's next door on Borrego's property. And the reason that is, is at the request of the DPW Director, that in the event that Borrego's operations or created some sort of spill, that anything that spilled on the roadway and went into the catch basins would be onto their property and not onto ours. That's just one of the little examples of, you know, just an odd sort of duck that this subdivision plan is. But I would venture to say that it's proper to move forward with any questions that the Board has, particularly on the waivers, to give a little insight into the folks. So when they're back here with us at our next meeting, the Board is probably in a better position to perhaps even consider voting on this. It's relatively straightforward. It's a number of waivers that they've asked for based on the fact that it's not really a subdivision that's being built. It's more driveway access and improving access to the town's property. And I'll be happy to step back or close the screen up or whatever you'd like you do at this point, Matt and Chair.
I would, myself, I would prefer to go over the waivers and give the applicants a sense if we have any problem or we don't have any problem with them. Paul, you would like to as well. What about the other Board members? Jim?
I'm pretty familiar with it. The only question I have, I'm trying to look, at some place in this staff report, Tom goes on to say that all this work will be done at no cost.
Guess what? There's Mike.
That's no cost to the... You got the password there, Mike? You got the secret handshake?
Don't, don't, don't stir the beer.
But there is a cost for this, and the applicant is paying for the street. And that's basically what we're asking him to do to get the easement. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct. Because of the fact that it's on town-owned property, and they likely had a constructive, a prescriptive easement prior to the town acquiring it, rather than going through all that expense, time, and no offense to Mr. Kirk, but we'd much rather spend money on engineers and attorneys for a project like this. So rather than going through and potentially litigating or requiring to move the entrance, I would venture to say the sum total for the applicant is probably, or the sum difference for the applicant is close to zero. Because if we said, "Put the driveway on your property", you're going to have to build something new and cut a hole in the trees. If we just upgrade the driveway to a subdivision road, probably a modicum difference of cost and benefits both parties.
They are the source of the funds. There's no magic money coming from someplace to pay for this. They're doing it.
They'd have to build a driveway into the property typically if they didn't have this already.
Okay, so you're taking the cost that would have been on theirs, putting it on our land, and having them begot it. That's what I thought. I'm all set.
Mr. Chairman, there's a little bit more to it. In that by building this road, the town now has opportunity to develop a portion of the town land for some other purpose. Oh, you should be looking at that.
That was brought up initially, Mike, when we were looking at it many months ago. Yes, Charlotte.
I want to know the impact of the waivers, building on what Mike is saying. Does that make the two lots buildable? What does, what's the status of the two lots?
The two lots are what, the two lots, Charlotte, are what the road is going to be built upon. Yes, Tom?
Yes, indeed, but I want to know, it's using a very small portion of it, and they're large lots. Are the lots then buildable lots, Tom?
The lot currently is buildable as it exists with the frontage on Locust Field. With the subdivision road, there'll be some additional buildability, but we're only building the road for the first 200 feet. So anybody who wanted to build anything in addition to that first 200 feet of pavement would have to make improvements to the road likely before the Board approved anything else.
But that's a 2.6-acre lot, so it could then be 40B into how many houses?
Well, if we look at the standard of a minimum of four dwelling units per acre for an affordable unit, let's go with 10.
Interesting.
But it's the town's property, so the town would be the folks who would decide what they want to do with the property, whether it be for municipal facilities or 40B or whatever the case.
Affordable housing?
Whatever the case may be.
Okay.
May I speak about the waivers?
Yes.
All right, my name's Michael McGrath. I'm a registered civil engineer and professional land surveyor. I've been working in Falmouth since November 1st, 1970. So my office prepared the subdivision plans. They were discussed early with the town staff. So there's a series of waivers. The first waiver is that if you measure on the ground, Tom, could you put the site plan up? Because I'm late, I can't share my screen. I don't have my exhibit caller. So if you go out on the ground, there's an existing hall road that's been in existence since the early 80s. The distance between that intersection of the hall road with Locust Field Road, the blacksmith shop, shop road, the distance on the ground is about 90 feet. Your subdivision regulations require there be 300 feet separation. What I want to make sure you understand is that this has been an active gravel pit. There's still mining the land. So there's been tractor trailers and 10-wheel dump trucks coming out of that proposed hall road for many years with no apparent problems. And there is insufficient room to move this in any other direction. So I would ask the Board to waive that. Then where, if you could put up the subdivision plan, we, where we butt the land that belongs to, the adjoining land belongs to Lawrence Lynch Realty Corporation. And where our sideline intersects Locust Field Road, it's quite a distance back from the pavement. I did not show a rounding, a 25-foot rounding. I asked the Board to waive that. One of the key reasons that I asked you to waive that is that, one, it's not really needed because the pavement is so far away. The second point is if we subdivide the Lawrence Lynch Realty Corporation, it is a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission. You probably kill the project. So the other one that I asked you to waive is that you have a regulation that says if a road abuts somebody else's land for the first 200 feet, it has to be 60-foot wide, and you shift the roadway over so that there's more buffer given to the abutter than normal. And so I'm asking you to waive that because I'm following the paved road that already exists. And it makes no sense whatsoever on the ground to move the road over, you know, I don't know, 14 feet. There's no practical good reason to do this. If you read the regulation and the purpose, you'll understand it. Then what I also asked you to do is, when I filed the plan with the engineering department, they went on and on and on about I needed waivers of the typical cross-section. The plan, the construction plans I show show a five-foot shoulder on either side of the pavement. The subdivision regulations have a cross-section that shows the entire 44 feet is basically level and the sides slope around the lot. And I know that I testified in a case where I said I designed 21 miles of road in Falmouth. And I got to tell you something, I've never done that cross-section except perhaps up at the EDIC, but that was completely different. And the other thing it does is that the Borrego Solar site plan you showed did not show the very wide shoulders. So I would ask you to waive that. And then I asked you to waive sidewalk construction, water main construction, and want to prove the looming and seating I show, waive streetlights, and waive underground utilities. This is access to a solar farm. We should be encouraging this as much as possible. And I just don't see the kind of need to have streetlights, underground utilities, water, main, and a sidewalk for the, for my client, which is Borrego Solar. Then I asked, you have a subdivision regulation that says that on the plan I label "concrete bound to be set". I have never done that. And the reason I've never done that is there's a court case that says that if I write "concrete bound to be set", and later somebody goes and looks at it, the courts assume I set the bound. I put a note on the plan that says "concrete bounds with crew-holes will be set at every change of direction in the street", and that gives you enough protection. I don't think you need to make me do that. And the other thing you've done is you have a set of regulations. By the way, I've never complied with the one that shows that I'm supposed to label the monuments. These regulations go back to the 70s. I've never done it in over 40 years. The other thing I've never done is quote-unquote "submit traverse tape". When I file plans at the land court, I submit basically traverse tape. I've never done it to the Planning Board because I have invested probably close to $100,000 in a computer system. It gives me an edge as far as the preparation of plans. And so I look at it, if I... And so I, I look at it, if I publish the coordinates over and over again free. Someone can go in, grab them from your files and then use them. And that's not fair. It's not right. And there's no public purpose in filing these traverse tapes. And so I've never done it. I've never done, uh, labeling the monuments. I've never submitted traverse tables to the planning board. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about any part of the design.
Okay. We all have all of this in front of us, Mike. So I think it's would be important to give feedback on the waivers that are being requested. Then there are some other things in going through the whole report that I've got questions on. But may we see if anybody on the board has any questions on the waivers first? Does anybody have any questions on the waivers that Mr. McGrath is requesting?
Yes, I just have a, a general question, which is, is this, uh, common in Falmouth with other engineers?
Is what? Asking for waivers like this or what, Pam?
Yeah, the, when Mike was talking about, there's certain things he's never done. Um, despite the fact the town may have asked for it. Is that pretty common?
I don't know what other engineers have done, but for instance, I did all of Ballymead. I think there's, uh, several miles of road there and I did not do those two things. Uh, I've been, like I said, I've been here since November 1st, 1970. And I've never complied with those regulations. These, this staff report was the first time I've ever seen this brought up in years.
Tom?
Yes, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, Mike's, uh, true confessions tonight. Uh, but we've, uh, when we've got things that are in the regulations, uh, you know, we have to address them whether.
Tom, you froze up. Okay.
We have to address them whether the board wishes to, uh, you know, whether the applicant wishes to or not. Typically, the planning board's regulations require a public benefit to waiving any regulation. In the case of this subdivision, I would venture to say that the subdivision in its entirety is a public benefit. Because what it does is it provides access to the town's property, improves access and the value of the town's property. So when we look at, is there some public benefit to waiving some of the regulations? I would make the case, uh, absolutely in this particular case because. We asked them for a driveway, uh, and in order to make that driveway to a subdivision standard. We took this path through, uh, conversations with, uh, Mike McGrath, Frank Duffy and Ed Burke early on. To go this way through the subdivision process. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to waive, uh, some of these regu-, uh, some of these requirements. Uh, but not necessarily all of them. And we'll have a further discussion about bounds at some point. Uh, but if you want to go through, uh, the waivers as we talked about, uh, Pat and I, uh, the chairman and I always talk pregame about what's on the agenda. And how to go about those things. I would venture to say that we would look at what those are, some discussion and bring them back for the planning vote. Uh, in the case of 30524 streets, this is on the screen right now. Uh, that intersection distance, 300 feet. That is something, uh, that the planning board recently did. With the preliminary plan for Woods Hole Partners that we'll hear from later on. Where the roads didn't offset. Uh, I never want anyone to think that the planning, the town is getting something that somebody else didn't get, uh. Prior to that, we're, we, we've got a favored hand here. So I think 30524, the offset of the streets is a perfectly reasonable, uh, request. Uh, given the public benefit, the fact that the roadway is already there. And moving the driveway elsewhere just creates another curb cut in the road, which is the thing that I'm always trying to eliminate. If I may, uh, go on.
No, Tom, I'd rather, if we could, if you don't object to it, I would rather pull the board. Do it one by one, which it was, we had talked about earlier. Is there anybody on the board who would object to waiving that? And if so, speak now and give your reasons for it. Is there anybody who has a problem with waiving that? As Mr. McGrath pointed out, that's been used as a hall road for a long time without difficulty. If it turns into at some point in time, uh, small subdivision. I don't know whether that would cause a problem at that time or not. So we have to think about this in the big picture. Does anybody have a comment? Okay, let's move on to the second waiver that's been requested.
Alrighty, section 30524B1 at the top of your screen. Is what, uh, Mike had talked about before about the, uh. The intersection minimum radius. To flip back to the screen for just a moment of the plan. Uh, where their property ends here at this bound that you see where my, uh, cursor arrow is at. That's where their property ends at. And this goes on, as Mike pointed out, about another 90 feet out to the road right away. So if this road butted right up to the property, we would look for that curve radius at this point. Uh, and here you can see that the curve radius is provided here at the end of the road. So I think. Uh, once again, that's a perfectly reasonable request, uh, to waive, uh, that particular, uh. Development or that particular waiver.
Does anybody on the board have any comments in regard to that waiver being requested? Okay, no objections, no comments from the board. Okay, let's move on to the next one.
I can't see whatever plan he's showing you. Can you share with everybody?
No, I can't see any plans either, Tom. They're not coming through.
Am I not sharing the screen, sir?
No.
But we received them in the mail.
Yeah.
Right. We've got, we've, we've got it in our paperwork.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about it.
Alright, how am I doing? Can we see 30524B on the screen?
I can see it writing.
You can see a letter. Yes, you can see my letter.
The letter.
Well, the, the, the letter includes, uh, Mr. McGrath's waivers, so.
Right. And we've, I've got those in front of me. I think probably all do.
Yeah, so. So 30524 Streets, is that what you're seeing right now where my cursor's at?
I am.
Please say, very well. Uh, and thanks for pointing that out, Mike. You're not the only one who struggles with Zoom sometimes, you know. Uh, so this is that provision where, uh, the, the, uh, 30524, please waive this requirement as the proposed road abuts a property line with the width of the road for the first 200 feet. To be 60 feet wide. Uh, once again, because we are right on that periphery of the two properties. Uh, we would ask that is a perfectly reasonable waiver, uh, for, uh, these two particular, uh, uh. For this particular development.
Okay. Any comments on that from the board? And now I can't see you because Tom is screen sharing.
I'll fix that.
Okay. So, does any of the board have any comments on that waiver request?
Nope.
Okay. So nobody's got anything to say about that. Going once, going twice. Okay. So we've got no problem with that at this point. Um, then we go on to the list. They, the request is to waive sidewalk construction. That seems personal, perfectly reasonable to me. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay.
Nope.
The next is to waive water main construction. Any problems with that? Okay. Wave shoulder width to width shown. No problems. Okay. Approve looming and seeding. No problems with that. Yes, no? Okay. Wave streetlights. Any problems there? Tom?
Uh, Mike, you know if there's currently a streetlight at that, uh, driveway where the road comes in at?
Oh, I do not know. I'm sorry. I don't know.
I would not recommend streetlights throughout the development, but I think if we're putting in a road there, uh, it would be great to have a streetlight, uh, right at that intersection.
As is common when we have an intersection. How about the rest of the board? Do you agree with Tom's comment on that?
Yes.
I, anybody else?
I think it's reasonable.
Okay. Jim?
Yep.
Okay. John?
Alright.
Yes, did you say?
Unmute yourself, John.
Gotta unmute.
Hit the spacebar.
Down in the bottom left-hand corner, hit mute. You've got a, yeah, okay.
Came back. He double clicked it.
So do you have a problem with that or do you want to, oh, you're back on mute, John?
One click. There it is.
No problem.
Okay. Paul?
I agree.
Okay. Charlotte, did you say, I don't remember? Did you?
I don't think it's unreasonable, but it's unlikely they need it. I doubt they're using the hall road at night. Exactly.
Okay.
Not much over.
Yeah. If I can clarify, we're, we're not talking about streetlights through the whole neighborhood. We're just talking about at the corner.
At the corner.
Streetlights through development, but require one at the corner at the entrance.
Very reasonable.
Yeah. Okay. So we all would like to see that put in.
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, wave underground utilities. It's a solar field. So at this point, now with all these waivers put in here, we all have to recognize that this could go. To some kind of development at some point in time. So I think we all should be aware. And that includes really Mike too, and Mr. Kirk and, and Tom. That we have to have the capacity to put these things in at some future date. And I don't know if they can be added in like utilities. Lighting can be. What say you, Mike?
Um, there is enough room on the shoulders, even the five foot shoulders. To put underground utilities in easily. In fact, uh, I worked for, um, one utility and we actually, I installed a cable. And it was done with a, uh, a machine they call a bow. And it was done pretty rapidly and there was sufficient space, um, to do it. The water's a little different. You'd have to hug the, the shoulder because you're down five feet. So the water's a little bit more difficult than the, uh, than the underground, uh, electric telephone and cable. But it can be done. I've seen it done. They have to put a trench box in. That's all.
Okay. With that thought in mind, does this bring up objections for anybody?
I'd just like to ask, is it true? Were someone to come along, the town goes along with developing both the lot that does have frontage and access to the back lot, which is larger. Would they then be required to come up to the standard for a subdevelopment road before they would be buildable lots?
Tom, can you answer that?
Uh, no ma'am.
So this.
However, to develop anything, you would need all these things to get water, electric. All that good stuff back to the property that you'd be developing.
That's what I asked. They would be required to do that in order for these to become buildable lots. So approving it now, basically as a hall road with all the waivers in place. Anyone who wants to develop that land later is going to have to make these improvements that we're now waiving.
Except it's town property. They'd first have to buy it from the town. It's our land.
I understand that.
And, and things can happen. So.
The other point is that you could drive drinking water wells in, in. Well, I have to check that because we're kind of close to the landfill in this whole area. They can't drive.
Yeah, we are.
Look, let me wait on that.
John?
I don't want to delay the process, but why isn't the town the applicant on this?
Because, because Borrego is required as a condition of the site plan approval for the planning board to create this, this road.
Well, they could pay all the, the fees, but I, I don't understand why the town's not the applicant.
Uh, they're listed as Town of Falmouth and Lawrence Lynch Realty Corporation are the two owners clearly listed.
Yeah, I understand who the owners are. It just seems like it would have been a lot simpler if the town was the applicant.
I think the town would be held to the same standards, John. I'm not sure, but I think they would.
Well, they can ask for all the same waivers. I'm just saying that. The town owns the land, the town should have been the applicant. But I don't want, I don't want to delay this process any, so.
Okay. Well, there are some other issues that were brought up in the engineering report that I think are going to have to be taken care of. Um, when I went through it. Um, engineering requires a street name be assigned to it. There was no street name chosen. And that has to be done before the street opening permit is issued. So, yes, Tom?
I, I just, before we get to that, can we, we, we're almost through. We've got a couple other waivers on the screen here.
Oh, there were? I thought we went through all of them. I'm sorry.
No, uh, if, if I may, so, uh, 30535F. Oh, pardon me. I'm, I'm pointing but not screening. Pardon me, are we back?
Okay.
Shoulder width, uh, 30535F. Four foot cross extra shoulder is, uh, Mr. McGrath has pointed out, we're not building a new road. We're essentially rebuilding the old one. Uh, so that seems like a perfectly reasonable thing.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. Anybody speak now?
I, I just have a, a question. I. Is the road layout 40 feet and 22 paved? Is that what we're shooting for?
I thought it was 44 and 22 paved, but it's right in that ballpark.
Yeah, okay. I've got it on the screen right now.
It's 44 foot wide and there's 22 feet of pavement.
Okay, okay. I thought I was missing something there, but.
That's your required, um, road layout and pavement width.
Right.
For a minor subdivision.
Because Charlotte brought up, uh, if, uh, it's going to be developed further down the road. Uh, bringing, uh, the road up to standard and it, it is up to standard.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the first 200 feet.
For the first 200 feet. So any, anything beyond that, someone would have to continue that.
Correct.
Right. So we, so many could then put an 18 watt foot wide gravel road, uh, to another parcel further down the road. Okay.
Tom, you had something to say?
I was gonna say, and the reason for that first 200 feet provision is because at 200 feet is where, uh, the proposed entrance to Borrego Solar Field might be. In the event that the utility didn't grant the existing easement they have for the hall operation. So the expectation is, is that Borrego would use exactly what they've been using all this time. But if utility said nada on the existing easement, they would essentially have to make a left turn right about the spot of that drainage easement. To enter onto their property. So that's why the first 200 feet of the property is, been discussed as the only thing that's being improved because if. Borrego has to, they would come to this point and then make a left and go onto their property. And I do not know what the outcome of the discussions with the utility are.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just want to say that this shows pavement that for 490 feet from the edge of Locust Hill Road is shown on the, the construction plans that are submitted.
Okay. Alright, further to, uh, engineering.
Well, we've got almost out of the waivers.
Oh, sorry. I keep interrupting you on that. I'm sorry, Tom.
That is fine. Uh, once again, the re- reason for why this is a subdivision plan is to improve that roadway. So under 30512E9 about concrete monuments at each corner. Uh, I won't get into a debate with, uh, Mr. McGrath about how concrete bounds are very important and how they should be, uh, installed on, in developments. So people know where their property's at, uh, in the future and in the present. Uh, once again, because we're essentially doing a subdivision plan to update a road, I think that 30512E9. Is a perfectly reasonable request, uh, for this particular development, considering the public benefit of the road, uh, to the town, uh, in this development, in this subdivision.
May I have comments? Yes, please.
Uh, every time I've ever asked for a release of the covenant, I always give the town a certification that all the monuments are set. So. The, the bottom line is you've had a requirement that we set monuments back to the, the mid seventies. the, the bottom line is, you've had a requirement that we set monuments back to the, the mid-seventies, and I have set all the monuments. It's just that, I think having a note on the plan that said a concrete monument would draw a hole, we set it every corner of every lot in the road is an appropriate, um, way to handle this. This is the way we've done it for years upon years.
Okay, may I have comments from the board, please?
I believe that's exactly what we're doing. We're waiving the requirement for concrete and agreeing to what the applicant wants.
Any other comments from the board?
The only thing I'm asking is the labeling, that monuments will be set.
Fine with me.
Okay, Tom said fine with him, so are we all then in favor of this waiver request?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright. So nobody has objected to that, then we go on to the final waiver.
Uh, three oh five, eleven C three, transverse sheets of further perimeter.
Do, do you want me to explain what they are?
Sure.
Um, we actually call them lot summaries in my firm, and what we do is we mathematically prove that the bearings and distances all the way around are, are, uh, are precise and that the lot closed. So, um, and the bottom line is that, uh, as I said, uh, we have these in-house. I just don't wanna publish it, why give away my intellectual edge? Or, I'm sorry, my competitive edge by having a significant computer system.
Okay. And it's, I think you know, Mike, I can appreciate that. So, what says the rest of the board? Do we wanna waive this, or do we not wanna waive it?
I'm fine with waiving it.
Me too.
Anybody on the board who is not fine with waiving it?
A question?
Yes, John?
Uh, Mike, what perimeter is gonna be shown or not shown? Is it just the, the two lots, or the one lot, or the, the property also where the solar field's going to go?
The only thing that I surveyed was lot four on, on the plan that submitted, and the next lot, which I can't see at the moment.
Lot five?
So, no, it's not five, it's-
Yeah, it's five.
Lot two. So, there'll be monuments set on all of the corners of lot, um, um, four and lot two. And if I-
I'm, okay, I'm good, thank you.
Alright, so the board is good with allowing that waiver then?
Yeah.
Okay. So, now, now I'll go back to the engineering report, um. They had a problem because the original lot lines were not shown on the plan. Does anybody have a problem? And would like to see the original lot lines?
I, I didn't get that, I have no idea what that means.
That, I don't know, that was in the engineering report, that's why I'm going over it, Mike. Um, they also would like to understand the purpose, means, and timing of the dis- discontinuance for the temporary turnaround.
Wow, what the-
Go ahead, Mike.
What the subdivision control law basically says, if a roadway gets extended and constructed, then it, temporary turnarounds die off, but I believe it takes a vote of the board to abandon a temporary turnaround, based on my long experience.
I think that's why engineering has put this out, because they just don't wanna have a turnaround that goes into disuse and disrepair. So they wanna have a sunset date on it, at which time it will disappear, that was my understanding of engineering's comment.
I-
Um, do you have a better sense of that or not?
I, um, I look at it that you required a turnaround of some type, and so I put that on there as the one that is the least disruptive. And, uh, uh, I would think that you could put in your decision that there's a temporary turnaround shown, and if the roadway constructed, uh, if the, if the easement and right-of-way or the road is constructed in the future, then upon vote of the board, the temporary turnaround will cease to exist.
So you believe that the temporary turnaround will continue to be useful on the haulage road? Yes, no?
Well, it's only gonna be used by the, by whatever happens on the town, what, if the town uses it. Uh, the solo people are gonna just drive by it, they're never gonna do it.
That's- And I think that's the point of engineering. Tom, would you find out from engineering? What their point is in wanting that, please? Um, engineering also wants an erosion and, and sedimentation control.
I submitted one.
Oh, you did?
I submitted an erosion control plan.
Okay. Then, they said that this may have already been taken care of, I just read their requirement.
If you look at the plan and profile, for instance, it shows the, uh, uh, unlimited work that is a, a silt fence, and there's a written description of an erosion control plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Now, we've got fourteen submissions in the chatroom, this is a public discussion on this. So, educate me, how do we bring this up and discuss it?
Give me a moment if you would while I scroll through the chats.
Of course.
I, I've been following the chats, and some of them aren't even about this hearing, people are firing questions all over the place.
Oh, well then-
Uh, I mean, the most of them I've seen are about Woods Hole.
Right.
Yeah, the majority of them are about Woods Hole, not about the current case.
Okay, is there anything applicable to the current case?
No.
If you want to see them, there's a chat button on the bottom of your screen, you can hit, and it can read them all.
Oh! I, I, I think I'd rather have this filtered through Michaela or Tom.
Yes.
I've been reading through them, and I'm just checking one more time to make sure I didn't miss any, but as far as I've seen, none pertains to this case.
Okay. Then I would suggest that we, at this point, continue the definitive plan application to win, Tom.
Well, that's my question for, uh, Mike. Mike, do we know what the status of the, the, the construction at the solar, uh, fields are next door?
No, I do not know. Uh, I know that I, the one thing I know, I have to revise the plan to show the streetlight at the intersection, so I've got make a site visit and get that added, that's the only thing I know that, that we have to do to, um, I believe satisfy the discussion today.
Wha- what I would recommend to the board, given the fact that we are, uh, uh, you know, pressed for trying to get projects out the door that are actually constructing things with our short staff, uh, that we take this, uh, this continuance, uh, into July, uh, so we can make some room for the other things that we need to get to in more pressing. Uh, with that, I'm looking at the July calendar right now. Uh, the board has a meeting on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth of July. Uh, if Mr. McGrath has no objection, I would suggest probably continuing it to July twenty-eighth.
How about you, Mr. Kirk?
Uh, I, and I don't know exactly what the, uh, how this impacts on, uh, Borrego's plan, uh, to go ahead, but if, if, uh, the twenty-eighth is, uh, what, uh, works best for the planning board and, and it's good with Mike, then that's fine.
Okay.
I don't believe it does at all.
Pardon?
I do not believe that it im- impedes Borrego's, uh, progress at all, because they've got an approved site plan, and one of those conditions prior to their, uh, starting operation, that they have these particular things done.
Okay, so then I would like a motion, please, to continue this hearing to July twenty-eighth, which we must do with that.
So move.
May I have a sec? Yes, Mike?
I believe I filed this project, uh, on around April seventeenth. Um, Tom, I know there's a statutory limit on your review, so the question I'm getting is, do I have to give more a written extension of the review period?
Uh, I do not believe you do, under Massachusetts general law, you have a hundred and thirty-five days to approve a definitive plan. Uh, and with the current, uh, uh, COVID regulations, that period is told until forty-five days after the state of emergency.
I just thought I'd ask, because I, I wouldn't wanna create a circumstance inadvertently while bringing it up.
There's no clock running right now.
Thank you.
The public needs to know this too, I think, so thank you for asking. And Pam, you started to make a motion.
I said, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and Paul, you have a question?
Yeah, can we perhaps define what it is we expect to accomplish on this next meeting, we've gone through this quite a few times. And if there's only a few limited items, maybe we can define those, so we know what's gonna come up in, in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, Tom?
Uh, I expect some clarity on some of the, the, the minor technical issues that, uh, engineering had. Uh, a revised plan for the streetlight, and a bore, a vote of the board on the waivers at that date.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, it would be actually a vote on this definitive plan application.
Well, we haven't closed the hearing yet, so it'd be, or, or, until the twenty-eighth. So, like I said, I, I don't think we're in danger of, uh, of, of derailing anyone's project. Uh, just a matter of, uh, you know, of clearing the decks for some other projects that people would like to have on the rails.
But if we are in danger, Tom, could you haul this back to July fourteenth?
Uh, we, we aren't, but, and if, but the board can continue to July fourteenth if they want, you can move it back, but you can't move it forward.
That's what I wondered, what do you think, board, do you wanna just do it at the fourteenth? Or continue to leave it at the twenty-eighth?
I'd leave it to the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? All in, yes, Jim?
I, I think what we're talking about is putting the streetlight. I think we should let Tom administratively approve the location of the streetlight and approve this thing and get it off our table.
Good idea.
I respectfully disagree.
We can't, yes, Tom. We'd have to close the hearing, and then you can take a vote. So-
Okay, we're keeping it open, I, I don't understand the purpose, but whatever.
Well, no, we have to, it's the, the way it's done, we have to keep it open. We close the hearing, and then we take a vote, we have to have a decision that we're voting on in front of us.
Oh, I agree, I, I just wanted to, we don't have to review, I don't need to review where the, where the light goes into the street. And, and all we need to do is have Tom draft up voting on the waivers, which we've all just agreed to do. You wanna wait a month to do that, okay, I don't think it's necessary.
Anybody else on the board feel that same way? We're following our standard procedure by doing it, yes, Charlotte?
I think that we could do just as Jim said.
Tom, is there a-
One of our efforts is supposed to be streamlining, we already know we're gonna approve it.
Tom, is there a legal reason why we could not close it tonight?
Uh, there is no legal reason why you could not close it tonight, it would just be, uh, contrary to all your policies in the past, and all your practices in the past.
I agree.
I'm not asking for a vote-
So that's the reason.
Close it.
Well, that is the reason, it's contrary to all of our policies and our behavior in the past. Thank you, Tom, for-
It's not contrary to our policies apparently to close it tonight, so we can vote on it the next time, is that right, Jim?
That's what I was suggesting, but you know, you want it open for another month, go ahead.
If the applicant isn't, doesn't have a problem with that, I don't see why we should.
I don't know.
It's only because we have other things to deal with, and I just would like to move this one off the table, I think we've spent enough time on it, but whatever.
We will move it off the table very rapidly when it comes up before us again, I believe.
Okay.
Okay? Alright, so, we have a motion, and it's been seconded to continue to July twenty-eighth, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, so unanimous, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike, and thank you, Mr. Kirk, for-
Thank you, um, Madam Chair and members of the board, appreciate the attention.
Okay. We move on now to, uh, we've got a public me- meeting, the applicant is Dick Betzig, special permit application and site plan review application to construct a forty-foot by eighty-foot prefab storage building for equipment and materials located at thrif- three fifty Old Meeting House Road, Cape and Islands Engineering. And I believe you have notifications, Paul? Paul? You have notifications?
Um, looking for it.
Ah. Tom, do you happen to have that information?
Pardon me, ma'am, I'm working the back room, uh, with, uh, elevating folks to the meeting, uh, what was the question?
Um, Paul is having trouble finding the notification dates on this special permit application.
Hoping Michaela's looking for the same sort of thing that I am, but I don't know that I see them. So, if I may, so we had a, a couple things, uh, going on here, initially, we assumed this was a, a special permit, uh, I mean, a, a site plan review, and turned out to be a special permit review as well. So our, initially, we, uh, had scheduled and asked for in a butters list for site plan approval, and then the special permit approval, uh, for, for both projects. Uh, I know that we did send out a butters notices, but I don't have that particular information at my fingertips, and I apologize.
Jim?
I, I also have a question, they're building a structure on this thing, is this something we actually did get to, uh, do a design review to see what they're building, or are we just doing a site plan review without any, uh, design review of the structure?
Uh, the planning board's site plan review does include design. Uh, this is essentially, uh, I'm gonna call it a glorified cinder block building, I don't wanna, uh, diss, uh, Dick's client's, uh, uh, project here, but it's an industrial, uh, project, uh, that will-
Waiving, there, you're asking us to waive doing any, any elevations or anything, where, we, in the past, when there were building, buildings to, yeah, out on one, on, uh, Thomas Landers Road for oil companies, we got to see the bu- the building, what they looked like, the doors, the shape. We made, you know, we had comment on it, so, we're not gonna do that anymore?
Uh, Mr. Betzig has joined us, and I believe it is a steel building, is that correct?
Uh, this is a prefab building, we did submit plans, it's pretty straightforward, it's just for storage, uh, and plans were submitted along with the rest of the documents.
Thank you.
Showing the structure, it's twenty-one feet tall, uh, with a four-to-five pitch roof. It's got typical fourteen-foot tall garage doors, allowing equipment to go in and out of the building.
They were sent to us, we have them.
Correct.
We do.
Little room industrial buildings.
Yeah, it, it is, it is not a cinder block building, it is a steel prefab structure.
How is that, how is the exterior finished?
Uh, it, I believe it's just ribbed, like a typical ribbed structure, I'm not-
Is that corrugated, corrugated?
Yeah, cor- corrugated steel.
Right.
Right.
There's no elevations being submitted.
Yeah, elevations were submitted. Yeah, they're part of the plan.
Were they in our package? I didn't see them.
They're there.
Can we show them? Can somebody show them to me?
Like this. When I, when I meant, how is it finished? Is it painted? Is it baked on finish?
It, it comes pre, pre-sealed for corrosion control. I'm not sure what the, the painting is, but you can see there's the raised seam metal panels on the outside.
Aren't there several of these buildings at Technology Park?
Yes, uh, th- this same company has put up one of, one or two of these buildings in the near, i- in the neighborhood.
Well, they're at Technology Park, I believe. They're on, on industrially, uh, zone land, the others.
Right.
Will this be the first one on agricultural land?
Uh, no, this is pretty typical. Uh, other agricultural properties have sa- similar structures.
I remember our conversation when we were approving a contractor's yard here that it sounded, and there was a concern among the neighbors and there was a concern on the board. This really was, uh, an industrial use rather than an agricultural use. Do you recall that conversation?
I was not, uh, privy to that. That happened back in twenty seventeen. I was not involved, but this is still being maintained. But the use of-
I, I remember because I was very concerned about storage of certain, uh, I wanted to make sure there was no fertilizer on the ground. I wanted to make sure, uh, that the cutting that took place, uh, wouldn't be spewed all over, uh, the surrounding properties. Am I on the right? Is this the same property?
Same one, and you talked about particulate somethings.
I'm sorry, Charlotte?
You were talking about particulate something or others from the wood, uh, operation that was going to go on, that it was polluted.
Right. Tom, you have a comment. Did you find out?
Yes, I, I wanted to just say the, the question was asked about the building and we just sort of veered off into sort of a discussion about things. Can we sort of start at the beginning with, uh, Dick's presentation about what's being proposed on the site?
I'd like to.
If, if I may, just do a little screen sharing here.
Okay.
So, uh, a- as the board knows, this is the, uh, the subject property at three fifty, uh, Old Meeting House Road. And take it to the top here. And this is the plan for the property as proposed. Uh, and with that, uh, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you to recognize Mr. Betzig for his presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Betzig, if you have a presentation, we'd like to hear it. Thank you.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. The purpose of the building is still going to be for agricultural landscape use. And, uh, the purpose of the building is to provide storage facility for equipment and materials used, uh, for that purpose. Right now, the owner is paying rent on a, on a private property off-site to store his equipment. So that's consequently why we're going forward with constructing this building. Um, it, it's still designed and the use has not changed. We're not asking for a use change. It's essentially a storage building and a provision was written that in fact, we could provide such a thing in the future. That's why we're coming to the board for this.
Okay. If the board approves of this, what you have to the left of that on our screen is a paved area with two storage containers, one of which is on the paved area and the other one is beside it. Will you still be using those storage containers or will they disappear and you'll just have the paved area?
No, that will still remain. All the other elements of the plan will remain. This is just being added.
Okay. Okay. Board, do you have questions?
I do.
Betzig. Okay, Pam?
So I'm going to go back to my original question. Will there be storage of any fertilizers, any combustible materials? Um, what is the plan? I just wrote notes and now I can't find them. Yeah, okay, we'll start with any fertilizer that you're planning to store there?
No.
Uh-
There, there are other provisions for the fertilizer elsewhere. If I'm not mistaken, there's some steel outdoor containers for that.
That I don't recall.
But they're not, they're not open fertilizers anyway. They're, they would be in bags. But no, there is no, no fertilizer scheduled to be stored in this building.
No hazardous materials?
No hazardous materials.
And nothing that's combustible?
That's correct.
Okay.
In the past, we have asked for a listing of what would be stored in a building such as this. I suspect we could do so again. If you, if that is a concern, Pam?
That's always a concern for me.
Okay. So we could ask for a listing then before we render a decision on this as to what is proposed to be stored in this building?
Yes.
And that becomes part of our decision. That has been in the past. Uh, any other member of the board have any questions?
Yeah, Pat.
Yes, Bob?
Essentially, this is going to be a garage from what I heard. Uh, it's going to be for storing the vehicles used in this business operation. Is that correct?
Some of the vehicles and equipment used for the operation. That's correct.
So it's, it's not going to be a, a structure for storing, uh, materials that are used in the business. It's more for the vehicles themselves.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, it's something that we, uh, always ask when it comes to storing vehicles. Uh, is there going to be any maintenance performed? Is this going to be a maintenance shed for the vehicles where there might be, uh, fluid changes, oil changes, transmission fluids, things like that? Uh, is that going to occur in this, uh, structure?
I don't believe that will occur in the structure. If anything is maintained with the equipment, I believe that's a third party. It's sent out to a third party.
Yeah.
Uh, these folks are not, these folks are not mechanics, if you will.
I, I, I believe that was part of the original decision that there was to be no equipment. We can check that. No equipment on this site, no oil changes.
Right.
So the original needs to be, uh, the original permit needs to be checked, Tom, to see what that entailed. But I believe from memory that that is what is covered under that original decision. Pam?
Is there going to be a concrete flooring?
Yes. Uh, we submitted a plan from a structural engineer. There will be a slab on grade. And there'll be drainage provided in accordance to the plan that we submitted as well.
And the drainage would go to where?
Uh, you'll see that on the plan. There is some, uh, concrete, you know, leaching pits and so on.
So there, there, you can pump out?
I don't know. I don't think there's any pumping required. This is slab on grade.
But you said if there is any-
Any, any, uh, any drainage issues will be diverted properly, yes, in accordance to the engineering plan.
Okay, Charlotte?
Um, I did, I'm sorry that we don't have the notices that were sent to the, uh, to the abutters. You remember the abutters were very involved in nineteen, in twenty seventeen when we discussed the contractor's yard. They thought, uh, they mostly came from the residential development, the opening for which is across the street from this existing gravel drive.
Right.
And they were very concerned then about putting in what struck them as an industrial operation then. So we discussed for quite some time the landscaping along the, um,
Right.
the lot line that was going to cover this up so they wouldn't be aware of it. A twenty-one-foot-tall, uh, metal building is a, a considerable size for a building. I think most trees are higher than that, but in the winter you can see right through them. And I would really like to know what the neighbors think of this plan. I'm sorry.
May I, may I comment on that, please?
Please.
Of course.
As you can see from the plan, the building setback is subs- is significant. It's nowhere near the neighbors. It's set all the way back to the back of the property. And twenty-one feet to put that in realistic terms, a single-family residence, the allowance is forty-three feet, so this is half of that.
Right, but that's a two-story building. We all walk that lot, so we're familiar with the lot. And the field in front of it between it and the road is, is predominantly flat. There's no real relief to the land. So it makes it, it's true, it's far back from the road. It's not, because it's flat land, you can see right across it. So I'm just, I wish we could hear from the neighbors what they think of this proposal.
I think there have been a couple weighing in, Charlotte, so we will hear from them.
Um, none on the-
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know there are some comments that have been coming through in the chat room.
Before you go to the comments, Pat?
Oh, I'm not doing that yet. Bob, go ahead.
Uh, I drive past this site all the time, uh, several times a week. And it's fairly well screened. If you're for a twenty-one-foot-high building, uh, it's not going to be that noticeable. And, uh, we did agree that, uh, the use that it's, uh, under now is an agricultural use. And if this was Farmer Brown and he was tilling the soil there and wanted a bond to store his tractor or his cows or whatever, it would be a no-brainer. And I don't see any difference between that and, uh, what's being asked for here. And if, uh, it's a building, uh, a, a metal building like you see along Thomas Landers Road, if it's, uh, subdued color, you know, the greens and the beiges and things like that, uh, you're not going to notice it.
Okay, anybody else have any comment?
I have a question.
Yes, Jim?
Well, I've been looking at this plan, the site plan, and it shows greenhouses on the site. Where are these buildings we're talking about going on the site? I don't have a plan that shows where they're located. Plan in front of me shows three greenhouses. Do you have a different plan?
Nope, that's what we've got.
And we're talking, th- these are, now we're saying that they're steel buildings? I'm really confused.
No, Jim, what they're proposing to put in is a forty-by-eighty-foot steel prefab building.
Where?
Tom, do you got your cursor?
Lower left.
Yeah.
Where does it show it on the plan that we have?
On the lower left.
Lower left.
That says paved area for s-
No, right next to it. To the right, proposed.
Oh, there's the proposed building. Okay, so the greenhouses are staying and it's one building they're putting there, not two?
That's correct.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, I got it. Sorry.
The original plan when we were first hearing it, uh, Mr. Bociano-
I don't have any problem with it at all. You won't see it. I got it. I'm all set.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, yes, John?
According to the plan that I have, it says there will not be any, uh, concrete slab. Says it may be added at a later date, but it shows no concrete slab.
Right. I'd like to put that, I'd like to put that in as a, uh, as a condition. Because I don't see anywhere where it says that either.
Uh, I submitted a separate plan for the concrete slab from an engineer as part of the submittal. And it was also requested by the building department. Originally, there was not going to be a slab, but then, uh, we talked about it and even though the plan doesn't say, it says no concrete floor, there is a separate submittal that calls out for a slab.
Okay, I, I have no objection to the slab. I just wanted to say my plan showed there wasn't going to be a slab.
You're right, John. It specifically says no concrete floor on the plan we have.
If there is, that's fine with me. It says it could be added at a later date. But if, if the building commissioner wants it, I, I have no problem with it.
I also should require it just for safety sake.
I think that, that should be a condition.
Yeah. I, I would propose, I think everybody on the board now has had room for comments. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. I would propose that as part of this decision, we make sure that all of the requirements of the former decision are pulled through onto this one.
Agreed.
Excuse me, Pat.
Yes.
We asked about the butters comments. You're going to get to them later.
No, no.
And there are butters comments and they deal with creeping industrialism.
No, Ta- Charlotte, this is not what I'm saying. I am saying that if we approve of this, that all of the requirements that we put in for that decision a few years ago be also brought forward to this. We do that in our decisions. We say that whatever we decide here does not throw away all of the requirements of the previous decisions, that they are all carried forward and required of the new site.
I still would like to hear what the butters were saying.
Yeah, I'm not saying we aren't going to hear. We're about to hear from them, but I do think I get to say something and that's what I'm saying right now. And John agreed with me that all of those conditions because-
Absolutely. That's standard. I already knew that.
Okay. Tom?
So, uh, it is, uh, as our notice points out, those comments come through the chat room and I'm fairly certain that Michaela has been monitoring those. So if you would be gracious enough to turn the floor over to Michaela to, uh, uh,
I would love to.
That would be swell.
Michaela, please.
Hi, so the comment that we received was from, um, Shelley Dewicki. Um, I apologize for any mispronunciations. Um, I oppose this permit request based on the original stated purpose. There's already enough traffic, but large vehicles and noise. This is an agricultural area in a residential neighborhood. As in a butter, I see creep into more industrial use and I object to that. Um, I am, oh, I'm not done. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I am a neighbor at three twenty-nine Old Meeting House Road. At the original hearing and permit, the now requested use was not allowed. I was at that hearing again. This is industrial use creep into a residential neighborhood. No special permit should be granted. And that's the end of that.
Pat, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, please.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this zoned agricultural and in fact, the agricultural zone allows residential property to be built? Isn't this zoned agricultural?
This is agricultural, a.
So it, it actually should be switched around. It isn't residential that agricultural is being allowed. It's agricultural that the residents were allowed. And I do understand from that first hearing that some residents were not aware that this was an agricultural zone. And so I just want to be really clear. It's not, it's not the residence that's being, uh, uh, crept up-
It's residential creep.
Yeah, it's residential creep into agricultural land. Thank you, Jim.
Thing I think we need to be clear on too is that this sort of use that has to do with growing things, with landscaping is completely allowed in the agricultural district.
Right.
Okay, now, Michaela, was there anybody else or was it Ms. Dewicki?
How was that?
Pardon?
That was it. That was the only comment.
The only comment. So no one else has commented on this?
Correct.
Okay, so Tom, the comments that you've had from the board that, uh, we've made so far that would go into a decision, would you mind going over them?
Yes, um, the storage in the building, what would be stored in the building? Uh, a garage for vehicles with no, we requirement for no maintenance on the buildings. Uh, check the original permit to make sure that those conditions from the original, uh, special permit are carried forward to, uh, this particular permit. Uh, a plan, uh, that shows the concrete floor that has, uh, previously been submitted, but is not currently in the record. Uh, and, uh, tha- that's what I have.
Okay, has anything been missed? Any board member thinks that anything has been missed in that as to what would be in the requirement?
Just that there would be no storage of fertilizers or any combustible materials.
And I believe that was in the original too, but it doesn't hurt to say it again.
Just reinforcing.
Yeah. Okay, now-
And I'd like, I'd like to know what color it's going to be. I, I would actually like to see, uh, a color rendering.
So would I.
E- even if it's just an information.
Okay. So.
That's not a problem. We can submit a color if you'd like. You have a color in mind? I mean, basically, these things, we choose it, we choose the color based on the surrounding areas, so we can have a muted green or
Right.
color of some sort. That's what you're looking for.
That's what, that's what I'm looking for. We, we don't want, uh, a bright, uh, robin egg blue or
Right.
Uh, a, a big bond red.
Red or-
Even, even though bond red would be appropriate there.
Yeah. Agreed. I agree. Okay. No, no problem.
Okay, so in other words, I think what, Bob, you're trying to say is something that will blend.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're looking for moss or sage?
Right.
I go to Home Depot sometimes. They have those.
And what number color chip is that, Tom?
I do not pick colors. It's not my game.
So I think what we would be looking for is- So I think what we would be looking for is for you to submit all of this to the planning office. So that I think we could take a look at this at our next meeting because I don't believe there's anything horribly difficult to provide. Is that correct?
This is straightforward. We can give you all the requirements within the next few days.
So Tom, I think we could schedule that, the continuation to July fourteenth.
Which is exactly why we sent Borrego to July.
I understand.
The room for things. This is a project that someone's been trying to put together and it is fairly minimum as far as a, as a change in what was previously permitted.
And if that is submitted to the planning board previous to that, you could potentially have a decision ready to be voted on that night so long as everything else on the submissions would be approved by the planning board. Does that make sense?
Yes, we'll have a favorable motion adopted drafted for the planning board meeting of June twenty-third.
Is that the twenty-third? Okay. So we want this, a motion to continue this to June twenty-third.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the issue be continued, the special permit be continued to June twenty-third. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, everybody's in favor of it. Thank you all and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next. The applicant is Timothy Leadham, trustee of RNG Realty Trust. Special permit application to allow parking in the front yard located at one two oh nine East Balmouth Highway, Cape and Islands Engineering. Do we have anybody here represented?
Good evening.
Kevin Flower popped up.
I'm here.
Yep. For the applicant.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Flower. I'm an attorney with Ahmet Clower Law Firm here in Balmouth. And I represent the applicant, Timothy Leadham, the trustee of the RNG Realty Trust. He's the owner of twelve oh nine, twelve oh nine East Balmouth Highway, which is the location of Boson's East Balmouth Marina. This property, which I believe you're all familiar with, is located at the corner of Route twenty-eight and White's Landing Road in East Balmouth. The only direct abutter to this is the town boat launch to the south. And the area across White's Landing to the west is the town parking area. This is zoned for marine use. Existing on the site are two large buildings in pretty poor repair. There's a building on the southwest side of the lot and a building in the northeastern, northeastern corner. The parking area as they exist are fairly poorly defined. Those structures, as I said, are in disrepair and are non-conforming in a number of ways. The building on the southwest side is non-conforming with a front yard setback of only three feet twenty-five required and a setback to the three-foot contour of less than fifty feet. The building in the northeast corner is non-conforming to the front yard setback as well, being only two feet and also non-conform to the three-foot contour. Lot coverage by structures, paving and parking is eighty percent where seventy percent is allowed. The applicant's proposing to raise the existing structures, which have an existing footprint of over twenty-eight thousand square feet and to build one single building which would only have a footprint of six thousand square feet, a reduction of over twenty-two thousand square feet. The lot coverage by structure would decrease from thirty-two percent to seven percent. And the lot coverage by structures, paving and parking would be reduced from eighty percent to sixty-eight percent, eliminating that non-conformity. The building would be set back one hundred and twenty-nine feet to White's Landing, which the building commissioner has confirmed as the front yard for zoning purposes. That would eliminate that non-conforming front yard and side yard setback as it would be thirty-one feet from the northern. The setback to the three-foot contour would be eighty, eliminating that non-conformity. The use would remain the same as does the number of slips. The proposal eliminates all of the existing non-conformities, improves the parking configuration substantially and represents a substantial and significant improvement to the property. This does require a special permit from this board pursuant to section one oh nine E of the bylaw to allow parking in the front yard. Given that the nature of the site is marine, is a clear desire to keep the building located near the water. The parking in the front is required to accommodate the same number of parking spots as exist today and are also presently located in the front yard. The staff report did include a section discussing the criteria for a special permit under section two forty sixty-nine D. But that section pertains to lot coverage when you have lot coverage of structures, paving and parking in excess of what's allowed in reference to stormwater calculations relative to not increasing runoff by more than ten percent in a ten-year storm. However, that, that particular section of the bylaw wouldn't be applicable because the proposed lot coverage by structures, paving and parking would be sixty-eight percent, which is below the seventy percent that's allowed by right. Section two forty one oh nine E states that the board may by special permit allow for parking in the front yard within five feet of property line. It does not contain any criteria for that special permit. So we look to the standards of two forty dash two sixteen, which says that the board must find that the proposal will not have adverse effects over balance the beneficial effects on the neighborhood of town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. Here, the proposal removes two very large buildings that are both non-conforming and in pretty bad rough shape and replaces it with a single building, which again would be a reduction of about twenty-two thousand square feet of footprint. It eliminates all the existing non-conforming setbacks as well as the non-conforming lot coverage by structures, paving and parking. There are substantial beneficial effects to the proposal. There are no real adverse effects. Given this, I'd ask the board grant a special permit request. I'd be glad to address any questions that you may have at the time. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, does the board have any questions? Yes, Jim.
I would, same as the last one. I was wondering if we could actually get an elevation and a rendering so we can see what we're approving.
Yeah.
So the, the applicant hasn't settled on a specific design yet. And whereas we spoke with the town planner prior to submitting to see if elevations would be required. And we're told that they would not be since their permit request was only for parking in the front yard.
Our planner doesn't speak for me.
Bob?
Yeah, this is Boson's, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
They have a place in Mashpee. Is it going to be the same as the building in Mashpee?
I, I don't, I quite honestly don't know. I do see that Mr. Leadham is here in, as, as a, as a panelist.
Okay.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Tim Leadham. I am the trustee. I'm the owner of the property and my understanding of the meeting this evening was to take care of the parking layout as defined by where we have the building in the reduction of the building coverage on the lot. We're looking to get down those buildings as soon as we can due to the condition of them. We've already vacated them. And we plan on coming back to the town or I plan on coming back to the town with plans for a building and I understand that that's going to have to be reviewed. But I don't, I would ask that is, is that, does that have to be part of the process here? When tonight's discussion, I thought it was just on the parking layout.
Well, I, I was getting to something else in regards to that that relates to the parking and in the location of the building. Because we've seen in other marine facilities where they're moving to boat racks for launching services and storage. And I'm just wondering if that is in the future here as well. And trying to head off any problem in the future that that might comprise. I'm just wondering if that's, if boat storage racks are something that you might be having in the future.
I have no plans right now or in the future for boat storage racks. I hadn't even considered it. What is the plan for the building? Is, if you look at the location on the property, the back of the building would be overhead doors for getting the boats in and out of the back so that they would access down to where the travel lift is.
Yeah.
The property goes on a slant uphill towards White's Landing Road.
Yeah.
So what you have is the elevation in the front is one, I'm anticipating will be one story higher than in the back.
Yeah.
And what you'll have is you'll have the marine accessory store entrance and office entrance facing White's Landing Road. And you would have the service areas facing the back, not visible from the road.
How many slips do you have down there currently?
Fifty, I believe.
And I, I'm sorry, I, I missed how many parking spaces are going to be here? Did I hear seventy?
I would, Matt Arul would have the exact count. I'd have to look at the plan to see what that is.
I mean, I, I could count them, but and are you going to be storing boats here during the winter is, is currently?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, Paul.
I just have a, I just have two comments. One is, I understand the same number of slips are there. I think it said forty-nine application. But there's going to be a new gasoline station. Where's that located on the site and what kind of protective measures are being made in terms of hydrant or any kind of emergency services in that area?
We already have, we are already pumping gas and diesel and we're in full compliance and have worked with all the different departments in the town and at the state level and we will continue to do so.
Thank you. I, I think that that needs the improvement that you're talking about. A lot of inconsistencies and it's pretty, pretty crowded. So I think it's a good idea.
Tom?
Tom? If, if I may, just to touch on a couple of points. And this is sort of consistent with the question that came up at the last meeting about how did four thirty-five Palmer Avenue become a tear down and the board never saw it? It's largely a product of our site plan by law that currently exists and is in desperate need of being. The only time a site plan is enacted is if there's a thousand square foot of change increase in square footage area. And so while four thirty-five Palmer Avenue and this property likely should have had a full-blown site plan review, our bylaw doesn't require that as it currently is written. So when the board talks about their design guidelines and things like that, technically, we don't have a role in that because the request for the planning board right now is parking in the front yard. It is important to me to make sure that the stormwater is fine on the property. I know the conservation commission has reviewed this and ordered some, and issued an order of conditions. But our role in this, based on our bylaws that currently exist, is not full-on site plan review, but approving the parking in the front yard setback. So I think the principal concern from the staff's perspective is just to make sure the stormwater works on this in view of the fact that we're approving additional park. That's the, the principal concern of the staff is just to make sure that we're finding stormwater wise.
Pat? Yes. I, I'm not sure, but it just seems a little odd to me to be approving parking with no building. I, I mean, is it me?
I brought the plan back up on the screen.
Right. So we're approving the parking without a plan for the building. Is that correct?
That's what he said.
That, that seems really very strange to me. Because normally the parking is based on the square footage of the building, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I'm not sure why we're approving parking when we have no building.
I'd be happy to speak to that, ma'am.
Yes, Kevin.
In a marine zone, the parking is actually dictated by the number of slips at the site. And, or for marina uses rather, it's dictated by the number of slips at the site. So there's an existing number of forty-nine slips and they'll remain forty-nine slips. Parking will remain the same. The, I think the applicant is still working through the design of the building. But, you know, we're looking just to make sure that we're going to be working within the footprint that we proposed. Any changes to that footprint would need approval by the board. But we'd like to know that the parking in the front yard, which currently exists, can remain. Because there is, there is currently parking in the front yard of the kind of disjointed buildings. But, you know, in terms of moving this project forward, as Mr. Bott said, this, this, as it stands, does not require a site plan review. But in order for the applicant to move forward with his designs, we just wanted to cross this bridge and know that we could continue the parking as it stands.
So the bill, so the building has no.
Pam wasn't finished yet. Go ahead, Pam, finish.
So the building has no impact on parking and parking has no impact on the building? Is that what you're saying? It's just the slips and that's it?
That is what I'm saying and I'm just going to look at the parking requirements. Because it's, for, for marina, under the table of minimum requirements for marina uses, is one space per berth or one space per boat capacity. So that's what dictates the parking requirements for marina use.
And it has nothing to do with any building on site?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Jim?
Well, I'm just reading the overview. The applicant is applying under site plan review. That's what we're talking about. That's the instruction in our report. I'm not making this up.
Yeah, but then you look down on, under the overview, no site plan is required. That's site plan decision.
But they're calling it a site plan review in the first paragraph. I, that's what I was going on.
I, yeah, and then it says.
I apologize. That, that was a typo on my end. I apologize on that.
Okay.
Well, that's why I'm confused.
Yeah.
Me too.
Here, okay.
All right, so that's, this is a whole different thing for me. I, I come from a landlocked community, so I, I've not been involved with any site plan like this. And that was my only concern is we're, we're looking at parking for boat slips. We're not looking at any parking for a building. And what happens when a building goes onto that site? There is no impact of parking with a building of whatever size it might be?
I would, I would only note that there are existing forty-nine spots and we're reducing the building size by about twenty-two thousand square feet. So, so what we're doing is allowing for a much more organized parking area as opposed to what currently stands. It's not, it's not an expansion of the use.
I understand that. I, I just need to be clear that we approve the parking for the slips regardless of building size. Is, am I wrong or?
That seems to be Kevin's understanding of it.
Seems very odd to me. That's all.
But where the parking is, Pam, they need a certain number of parking spaces regarding the slips, but where it's placed. You could do that in relationship to the building and definitely wherever, okay? The placement of the parking is not relative to the number of slips. So Charlotte.
I'd like to comment on the request that's been brought to us. It makes sense actually that it's based on the slips. It's about the boats. People are trying to get to their boats. That's why they park there. So, but I'd like to comment on what they're asking for. I looked at it. I think it's, and I'm familiar with that property. I, I think it's a big improvement in the way it's going to look from the street. It doesn't seem to impact on what's going to be happening on the road that it immediately connects to. It's, I would have no problem approving this and it would be a courtesy to bring back an elevation of the building once they decide what they're doing. John?
I agree with Charlotte. I think it's a terrific improvement. I understand, my understanding is correct. Right now there is an entrance from Route twenty-eight to the site. Well, that's going to be eliminated. It's going to be a much safer
Right.
position for traffic. And there, like, as Kevin said, they're going to eliminate about twenty-two thousand square feet of structures. I think it's a terrific improvement. And like Charlotte, I would like to see elevations at some point, but I think this was well done by the applicant.
I agree. Thank you for that.
Bob?
For helping me out.
The way they have to have the parking in that, in the front yard is due to the use of the building. If they put the building right on White's path and put a little front lawn and all that and had the garage doors in the back, they'd lose all that parking area. Whereas the building being located in the center of the lot. Whereas the building being located in the center of the lot allows the access for the boats to go in and out of the building, but also allows for the parking to give them the uh, correct number for the number of slips and uh, the additional parking that they'll have, so it's a, it's kind of a form following function as far as allowing the parking to be in the front yard.
Paul?
And the parking is already there.
Yeah. Paul, you had a comment?
The only comment I'm going to make, the, the landslide's quite a bit down from uh, White's Landing, from twenty-eight. And the location of the building on the high point, I think it's a pretty good idea, but I'm curious whether they're trying to address uh, a little bit of rise at the same time. Project.
I can comment that yes, we've given a lot of, we've done a lot of detailed planning, and Cape and Islands Engineering has given me a lot of good guidance and input on this. And we went through conservation department, um, they approved the plan. And uh, I mean, we're dealing with stormwater runoff, we're eliminating many, many points of exit off the property. It's very, very extensive planning on everything that's involved here, the contour of the land. That was a big challenge, and we're improving it and simplifying it. And many, many ways, improving it both how it functions and how it looks. I think you all are familiar with the property that I obtained and the condition it was in. And uh, you know, we're excited to move forward. And we, and I do know that the building, you know, will be reviewed in town. And we're identifying where it's gonna be and what the dimensions will be.
Great, thank you.
And I, I too agree, having driven past that every day for years and years and years. I agree that this plan is, I think, quite good. Engineering has, um, they want some better calculations for stormwater runoff and recharge volume, and that does have to do with how the parking is put in there in the parking area. So I think that needs to be a requirement. That those calculations, if they've not already been done, to the needs of the engineering department should be done and provided to engineering and to the planning board. Let's see. And I think you're aware, Kevin, that the, we always send things out, the water department needs to review the water, even though there's water in there in regard to backflow protection, that's quite important. Too, so those are the couple of comments that I picked up out of the engineering report. They also don't want to see any materials or equipment stored in the town parking lot across White's Landing Road or within White's Landing Road right-of-way. Can you do this without having needs of storing any of the construction or demolition equipment outside of your own property?
Is that a question, is that from?
During construction, correct?
It is, and I, I see Raul wants, like, would like to comment, and I know he would be, uh, he's the engineer from Cape and Islands, and I know he'd have some pertinent observations too. So.
Good evening, could everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, Raul is starting from Cape and Islands Engineering. Um, so yeah, um, just to address, um, one of the comments early on, um, and I see, I think Team Leland touched on this. The building as located in the middle of the property has two levels, the front level for the offices is much higher than the back level. So we do have that driveway along the north side following parallel to Route twenty-eight. That allows us to actually drop in elevation along the side of the building to reach that lower level. Similarly, on the south side of the building, we also have a great change from the front, higher elevation to the back, lower elevation. So those two sides allow us to, to gain access to the different levels. That's why we don't have any parking along those two sides, because it just becomes too, too much slow. As for the drainage, currently there is no, no drainage on site. The lower section of the property is actually elevation two during high moon tides, actually the, the waters reaching to the parking area. One of the things that we're doing, we're eliminating all this, um, lacking of drainage systems, and we're introducing six drainage systems into the, the proposed project. Um, four of them are intended for all the pavement that we're proposing and all the improvements on the pavement and parking. And two of them are for the roof runoff. So we have two roof runoff, one shedding to the front, one shedding to the back, and then four separate drainage systems for the parking. Um, where currently there isn't any, and most of the runoff just flows over the existing bulkets onto, um, the waters of, of the river. Believe there was another question, but I'm, oh yes. Um, so yeah, there, there was a comment from the water department that recently, don't, don't exactly know the date, but there was a two-inch water service provided to the property. If we can tap into that existing two-inch service, we will do so. But we are also calling out for a new fire suppression, um, service, so this building will be serviced with a fire suppression service.
Okay, and then Raul, uh, Paul wanted to know what, um, provisions you're making. You're already saying on moon tide, it laps over some of the parking spaces. What provisions are you making for what is pretty well assured is going to be higher water levels in the future?
So right, um, this project, um, includes the reconstruction or replacement of the existing bulkets. The existing bulkets are probably in some areas at elevation two. What we are proposing to do is remove that bucket and propose a new one up to elevation four. So we're raising the elevation of the bucket along the entire waterfrontage to that elevation, so the bucket will be a fixed elevation much higher than existing for, for the majority of the site. And that will keep the waters of, of the river, um, just off the property.
Paul, does that answer your question satisfactorily? Click the mic on.
Yeah, Raul, that's good.
Okay. Um, let's see. So Raul, you will be providing to the engineering department better calculations as they, as they asked for in regard to stormwater and recharge volume?
Um, as part of the notice of intent and order of condition that was issued, there was calculations provided in compliance with the mass, um, DEP stormwater management standards. We can resubmit those, those calculations that are already approved.
Would that be a good thing to do, Tom?
Please. Absolutely, uh, we'd like to make sure that, uh, because we're, we're doing parking, uh, and we have so few levers under the fact that this has been called under site plan review, just to make sure that the stormwater is contained on the site. Uh, so that would be, and if that's possible to get that information in, uh, in short order, uh, the engineering division, uh, DPW department in general is shorthanded with people retiring, people changing jobs. And the better, because this is another one of those projects that people would like to keep moving on. Schedule-wise, I'm assuming this is not something that you're going to be trying to do during the boating season, uh, gentlemen?
Correct, I'm looking at, uh, getting into demolition phase this fall.
Very well, so.
We're getting ready right now, we're doing whatever we can right now without disrupting, you know, the boating activities.
Well, once again, as, as we bring this back to the board for a vote, I don't want to hold anybody up, but also want to make sure we've got some free board for the other applicants that are coming in. So is it, uh, is it, uh, fine to, uh, continue this out until that first meeting in, uh, July? Versus in two weeks to just make sure we've got everything buttoned up for, uh, the, the questions we've got? That'd be a July fourteenth meeting?
And you're directing that to Kevin and?
Yes, does that, does that present a problem for your?
I don't think it presents a problem from the timeline, and realistically, um, even if we submitted something tomorrow, the day after, you know, as you mentioned, engineering is running shorthanded. So I would like to get this done as quickly as possible, I think, I think a more realistic timeframe might be that July date, just so we're not getting engineering comments, uh, you know, two or three days before the hearing.
Paul, did you have another question, I thought I saw your hand? Pick your microphone.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I understand.
Checking my camera, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to ask any more questions or solicit any more information? Okay.
If I could interrupt, um.
Yes, Raul.
What was the specific request from engineering in the drainage? He, that could be read.
Let's see, they need better calculations, is the, the way they put it, in regard to stormwater, um, capture and recharge. The capacity for recharge value, volume. It's in their report, Raul, if you do not have it, then you can request that from Tom, I think, so he can forward it to you.
Thank you.
Okay? Um, so you're thinking, Tom, about scheduling this further for the July fourteenth?
July fourteenth meeting.
Okay. May I have a motion? Oh, wait a minute, we can't do this yet, because we do have some public comments, I saw one or two coming in. Kayla, could you field those for us, please?
Absolutely. Um, so from Richard Barrett, Three Childs River Road. "We are in agreement with the proposed construction of Boson Marine and the new dock spaces, including the new parking area. The exiting marina has been in existence for over one hundred years and river mud has been pushed across the river by boating traffic to high levels, making navigation troublesome at all tides. We however are concerned that additional boating traffic flow will push the river mud slash silk in front of property at Three Childs River caused a hardship to my property."
Okay. So does anybody have any comment on that comment? I'm not a boater, so I don't know, and.
I can just, this is Tim Ream, I can just offer the comment that, uh, our project is not increasing boating activity, it's not adding more boats, it's not adding more slips. It's the same level that has been there for better part of it. You know, not all those slips for a century, but for many decades. And, um, the project with the installation of the new bulkheads is also including doing dredging along the bulkheads to actually improve the flow of water in the river, so we actually are taking sediments out with this project.
I'm sure the questioner will be very delighted to hear that. Are there other questions, Michaela?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. So could I now have a motion then to continue this to July fourteenth?
So.
Okay, one of you moved in one second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further comments on this, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand, please. Okay, hundred percent unanimous, thank you all. And thank you all who have attended this and the commenter as well, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So, we'll move on now to Woods Hole Partners LLC definitive plan application to create a four-lot subdivision with four hundred and forty-five linear foot roadway located at five thirty-three to five thirty-nine Woods Hole Road, Holmes and McGrath. And Tom, I'd like to give the floor to you on this one, if you don't mind.
Activate your mic.
Can't hear you, Thomas, okay.
This is Woods Hole Partners, I'm looking to see who's in the, uh, in the queue, uh, as I'm putting this guy, so I see, uh, Bob Ament here.
Hi, everybody.
Bob, do you have other folks with you?
I see, okay, Kevin?
Matt Costa should be joining us.
And is Kevin also, is he still on or is he joining you, Bob, or what?
I don't think Kevin needs to be joining us.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
There's Matt.
Alrighty, uh, as, as, as previously discussed, and there's been a lot of questions, a lot of, uh, uh, concerns about, uh, from the neighbors about this four-lot subdivision is being proposed for the development. Uh, the four-lot subdivision is being proposed, uh, to grandfather the zoning, uh, under, uh, on the property. At town meeting last year, we approved a zoning change that identified what that top floor of the building was, that half-story. The applicants filed a preliminary plan prior to town meeting, which essentially gave them a, a procedural grandfathering on the, uh, the zoning change. They filed the definitive plan that the planning board approved, and within seven months of that, they filed a definitive plan. And if that definitive plan is approved and endorsed by the planning board, that will grand, grandfather the zoning on the property for eight years from the date of endorsement. Even though this is a development that's being reviewed, uh, a, a plan is being reviewed uh, that is likely not to be built, it's still the town's responsibility to review it as though it is being built. For the folks who are confused, are they building a four-lot subdivision, are they building what is, is previously approved? Uh, it's my understanding that they are, are, they are building what was previously approved. Uh, and this, uh, this particular discussion is about approving the site plan to provide grandfathering under the zoning. And if I have misspoken, I'm very sure that, uh, Bob Ament will correct me. Thank you.
Okay, Bob?
Well, I would just add to what, uh, Tom accurately reported. Uh, that, um, Woods Hole Partners, uh, does intend, um, as soon as it, uh, is able to, to construct the project that has been approved by the planning board under site plan review in April of last year. And the zoning Board of Appeals by its special permit decision, uh, last summer by the historical commission, um, early this year, and also previously by the Cape Cod Commission, and that is a forty-three, uh, unit age restricted, uh, multifamily housing development, uh, in seven buildings. When the planning board proposed to town meeting last fall that the zoning bylaw be changed to, uh, prohibit three-story buildings in the, uh, Business Redevelopment District. Woods Hole Partners filed the, uh, preliminary plan out of which the definitive plan before you has evolved. And as Tom reported to you, the purpose of that was to freeze the zoning. Uh, the zoning, uh, Act, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, uh, specifically provides that a developer can, uh, freeze the zoning by filing a, um, a subdivision plan, which is what we've done. We did so because although, um, the special permit, um, in a sense freezes the zoning, at least for that particular, uh, project, there are any number of, um, circumstances under which, uh, the developer might want to take advantage of the zoning freeze. If for instance, uh, perhaps as a result of the pending litigation, that is, the zoning Board of Appeals decision was appealed and is pending in court, uh, so that the developer can proceed. But if as a result of that, that changes were made to the plan, or if the present plan were abandoned altogether and, uh, something else was done on the site, it would be advantageous to the developer to be able to proceed under the zoning that was in effect prior to town meeting that would allow three-story buildings. And as I think I said at the preliminary, uh, uh, plan discussion in December of last year, it would actually, uh, just about be malpractice to not have, uh, file the plan to freeze the zoning, which is, which is allowed. And certainly advisable in a case like this. So, uh, with the help of, of Matt Costa and Cape and Islands Engineering, we've submitted the definitive plan. Um, we responded to, um, issues that were raised at the preliminary plan, um, stage. The planning board did, uh, vote, uh, an approval of the preliminary plan, although I'm quick to point out that such an approval is really just advisory, because the preliminary plan, um, process is to guide the developer in, submitting a definitive plan. But, uh, key in that discussion in your vote was, were three waivers which were discussed. Then, uh, one to put the proposed driveway for the subdivision, um. Then, uh, one to put the proposed driveway for the subdivision, um, on, uh, the, I think it's the east side of the, of property. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Matt. Instead, where it's only about two hundred feet from the intersection of Church Street, instead of the required three hundred feet, we could have put the driveway on the other side of the property and we would be more than three hundred feet. But it's a much better location if one was to divide the property, uh, to have the, uh, curb cut where we've, uh, proposed it to be. We've also, although we have a sixty-foot, um, layout, the zoning bylaw, uh, says put the road itself away from the butter, uh, within that sixty feet. In this present case, we want to leave the driveway about where the present, driveway is that has served the hundred and seventy-seat restaurant that used to be there and fifty-four unit, motel, and is intended to be one of the driveways serving the forty-three, um, multifamily use units that were approved. And by putting it there, uh, putting the driveway in the location proposed, we avoid, uh, cutting into the hill, below the historic dome. And we also requested that there be a waiver of the twenty-five-foot, uh, radius at the street. In this case, there's a particularly wide, uh, state highway layout and the, uh, property line is, um, approximately thirty feet away from the pavement, and so that, that, um, twenty-five-foot radius in that location, uh, wasn't necessary. Now, the town engineers have submitted a, um, report about the plans, uh, that were filed, by Matt back in March. That report from the engineering department is dated April fifteen. For some reason, we were not sent a copy of it until last Friday, and that's really unfortunate because we would have been able to, uh, respond to a host of, uh, questions and, um, proposed changes that the engineering department has. In the last couple of days, and we've only had a couple of days, um, Matt's actually revised all the plans, but we haven't submitted them because it wouldn't have helped the process to submit the revised plans on the afternoon of the hearing. But, um, Matt is able to respond, uh, to almost all of the engineering departments, uh, re, engineering departments, um, requests, and they're shown on plans which will be submitted, um, uh, later this week along with correspondence that, uh, that addresses the changes that are made. I would hope that we don't, um, um, overthink, uh, this particular plan. We're proposing four lots, the smallest of which is around forty-three thousand square feet. The required zoning, um, minimum lot area in the business residential development is only twenty thousand square feet. We've already had all the studies done and the planning board has reviewed the traffic studies for, um, a curb cut in this very location to serve forty-three, uh, homes. The use of those four lots, if they were ever created, isn't certain. We don't think we'll ever be, uh, actually creating those lots. The protection runs from the date of endorsement, not from recording the plan, and we don't intend to record the plan. But the zoning will be, uh, protected. But obviously, the uses of the properties of the lots would have to comply with business redevelopment uses. Now, Matt did identify, um, I think, um, about three or four, uh, waivers in addition to those we had already requested that we think would be necessary. Uh, one of them is that around the cul-de-sac, there is a steep slope to the side, uh, where, where engineering has recommended a, um, a guardrail, and that's fine, uh, the new plan will show that. But the slope, uh, on the outside of the, uh, guardrail is steeper than the one-to-one, uh, which is a requirement for side slopes next to roads. Uh, but that's the existing, uh, topography. Another, um, waiver that we'd like to, uh, receive is a waiver that requires a drainage analysis based on the maximum potential, uh, use of, uh, property. That's a rather, um, somewhat vague, but, um, um, demanding, uh, requirement in this, in this particular case, and particularly taking into account the purpose of this filing, um, and the fact that we've already submitted, we had approved by the planning board and the Board of Appeals and reviewed by the engineering department, the drainage for forty-five unit, uh, development. Uh, we would ask that, um, the, um, calculation of drainage for all future possible uses of the lot be, uh, waived with the requirement that drainage calculations be submitted for any particular use that's proposed in the future. And of course, any use other than a one or two-family, um, home, would require, anything requiring more than, um, five partner spaces or involving a thousand square feet of, uh, square footage, thousand square feet of floor area, would require a site plan review, and so all those calculations would have to be done, um, at that time. So, we would ask that that, uh, waiver be granted at, uh, big expense for the applicant to prepare uh, that entirely speculative analysis at this time. And it's a big expense for the town to have its engineering department, um, study, um, study that information, and it seems, unnecessary, um, in something that can be provided to protect the public interest in the future. Also, we've proposed, um, not having grass strips along the side of the road. We are proposing a sidewalk. The usual requirement of the town is to have a s- grass strip between the street and the, uh, sidewalk. The engineering department offers an alternative of having a, um, vertical curb instead of a Cape Cod berm, um, and so the new plans are going to show that. Uh, we don't want to have that grass strip, um, outside the road because it would just expand the area of development, and it would cut into that slope I mentioned, uh, below the, um, below the nautilus, uh, below the dome, rather. So, we would ask for that, uh, waiver, and finally, we would not want to have to install, um, street trees because there already are mature trees, um, on the sides of the, uh, proposed, uh, street, and we think that that's unnecessary. Otherwise, we would want to meet all of the town's requirements. We're not, uh, asking for much of a, uh, in the way of waivers, except for what's necessary, uh, to put the proposed road where located, where we're proposing to locate it, instead of on the other side of the property. And since we never intend to build this road, we're not that concerned about the expense of meeting all of the town requirements that we can. I'd like to ask Matt if he has any, uh, comments about any of this, um, and if not, he and I can, uh, take your questions.
Matt?
Uh, good evening. For the record, Matt Costa, Cape and Islands Engineering. Um, I don't have anything other to add than, uh, one item. Um, I did mention, uh, I, I discussed with Bob in the engineering review on, uh, page five, when they discuss, uh, the erosion control plan, there was a suggestion that, uh, a condition, uh, be placed, that that plan be done at the time, uh, be, be prepared and submitted with all the required information at the time of, uh, construction. So, in, in lieu of adding all those additional details to that plan now, we would agree to that condition that the, uh, plan be done at time of construction, was for sedimentation control, uh, for the site. That's the only thing that I have to add.
Okay. Does the board have any comments or questions? Bob?
Need to unmute yourself, Bob.
Unmute, unmute, Bob.
I had to mute myself because the dog is a loud drinker and the water is right next to me here. The, uh, the engineering, uh, report, uh, has, uh, uh, deferred most of the, uh, waivers and everything to us. The only thing that, uh, I see, uh, has more to do with just the drawings themselves, uh, with, on the, uh, section, uh, called, uh, on three oh five forty-two inspections and street, uh, yeah, inspections. And then, the section, um, Sheet C one, one-five, uh, all those, they, they, they have requested that the planning board, uh, include condition, uh, there's a bunch of different things, and Sheet C one-twenty. That is just, uh, that's just drawing, isn't it? It's, uh, those are, those are things that, uh, you could satisfy the engineering department with, am I correct?
Um, most of the items in there where there was discussion of if a waiver would be needed or not, we've addressed and eliminated the need for a waiver. So, I think that you'll see that most everything's gonna be addressed, uh, with the exception of the three additional waivers that Bob mentioned, this evening.
Yeah, because it, it, it just, uh, seems that they're looking for, uh, indications on the drawings of different things, uh.
I tell you, we did have a question about one thing, and there was something in there about a, uh, an outside consultant. So, we just had a question of,
Yeah.
Who is an outside consultant? Who's inside, who's outside?
Inspections, is that, uh?
Would you like to answer that? Tom, I know would like to answer that.
So, uh, the town has recently adopted fifty-three G, Massachusetts General Check for forty-four, Section fifty-three G, providing for outside consultant. The planning board has not signed on to that provision, they still would prefer to have reviews done in-house, uh, which is a, a strain and an expense on the engineering division, as Mr. Ament has pointed out. Uh, so that's what that, uh, request for outside consultants were, because every other board and committee in town has adopted fifty-three G except for the planning board, so I think that's a fairly standard response for them.
But what does it, uh, Tom, what does it? Who is an outside consultant? That is, um, Matt Costa is a professional licensed, uh, uh, engineer. Surveyor, sorry.
There are four firms.
Is he an outside consultant?
There are four firms identified by the town, uh, on the consulting list. Uh, but as I said, the planning board has not opted for fifty-three G, so the review would go forward within the engineering division here in, uh, Falmouth.
Well, then would we not put those provisions in this decision?
Pardon?
Then would we not put in the language about outside consultants in this decision because the planning board hasn't adopted it? What I'm certainly trying to avoid is a situation where the town, um, review, does the same review it has traditionally done and does now. And it's just reviewing another consultant hired by the applicant. So, we have, um, the applicant's, um, engineering firm, uh, preparing the plans, doing inspections, and I'm just wondering if it is an outside consultant that then inspects their work, um, and, and what's been done on the ground, uh, does the town still review and comment on it, or just rely on the outside consultant?
Tom?
So, in this case, it's not germane because the planning board hasn't opted for fifty-three G, and I don't want to take up any more of the board's time, uh, on that. So, their review will be in-house, but if I may just continue about the waivers. Uh, one of the things is we were talking about earlier tonight with the Borrego subdivision on town-owned property, is that the board is well within their rights to waive any of their subdivision regulations. Under three oh four forty-seven, it says in the subdivision regulations, "A strict compliance with the requirements of these regulations may be waived when, in the judgment of the board, such action is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the subdivision control law." So, the planning board waiving their subdivision regulations is a, is possible, uh, and called for, uh, when it's in the public interest, and, uh, so that'll be the board's judgment. But as I pointed out before, one of the things that is sort of the downside of, uh, someone's filing a plan specifically to grandfather their zoning is that we still have to spend the time to vet the plan exactly as it was required if it was going to be built. So, while that drainage, uh, information that was discussed previously may be onerous and, uh, for the applicant, uh, it'll be the board's call whether that onerousness and expenses within the public interest, uh, for, for waiving those sort of things.
If I could, I'd just, uh, point out that we did submit a memo to the board, uh, regarding the waiver of the three-hundred-foot separation issue. It points out clearly that, uh, why the location we're proposing is a better location, involving much less in the way of cuts and fills. And we've referred to the sections of, uh, subdivision rules and regulations uh, that direct that existing contours be preserved to the extent practical. And what we're doing is exactly that. That also applies to the slope off of the cul-de-sac. And the waivers requesting not only will be allowed for a better use of the land, they, they will save the developer, um, money. They will save the town engineering department, um, uh, considerable, um, effort. Those are public benefits, and there is no disadvantage to the public whatsoever in postponing, uh, the review of the maximum possible development of the property. If it is a condition of future development of these lots that, uh, that information be submitted, uh, prior to a, a building permit being issued or most likely to site plan review, um, uh, being undertaken. The planning board should use its discretion, um, with discretion and wisely. The requirements for a four lot subdivision are perhaps, uh, should be looked at a bit different than a hundred lot subdivision involving a hundred acres. And it, it is perfectly reasonable for the Board of, uh, Planning Board to take into account that this property is already substantially developed, and there have been significant reviews recently done about substantial development on the site. It's simply a matter of being, um, uh, reasonable and using your discretion.
Um, I don't see a copy of the memo that Bob referred to in our packet that he sent.
Uh, I, I do not know that it is in there.
It was submitted with the application.
So, I just wanted to say in regard to, uh, the subdivision regulations, three oh five twenty-four, Street A six on the intersection alignment, uh, the planning board previously opined during the preliminary plan that they would likely grant that waiver, so I don't think three oh five twenty-four, Streets A six, that offset is going to be something that's going to be particularly controversial with the board. Uh, we had that same discussion earlier with, um, with, uh, the Borrego development or the Borrego, uh, plan on the town's property off the local field. Uh, but once again, we're, we're not voting waivers, just, uh, making sure we understand what they are, uh, at, at this point. Regarding, uh, one other thing, if I may, while I've got the floor, Mountain Chair.
Yes.
Regarding, you know, getting information out to the various parties and applicants and things like that, uh, we've been, uh, we're doing our very best, uh, uh, to, to get those things out, considering the staffing levels that we've got, and in a number of conversations I've had with Bob, and I think that he's agreed with those, is that, uh, this particular project hasn't, in, in trying to get the work pushed out to get plans approved for people who are actually building things, because of our short staffed and the ability that the governor has given us, we've sort of, uh, made this less of a priority. made this less of a priority for the town's time to get that sort of communication going on that we typically would have between the applicant, the engineering division, and have basically told the engineering division, if you have other priorities that you've got to deal with, uh, please do those because this is not a project that's going to build anything. This is a project that's going to be grandfathering anything, and, uh, no one seemed to feel that there was any particular, uh, uh, detriment to the town or to the applicant, uh, by the, the additional time this review might take.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, Charlotte?
I'd like to make a comment. Um, we have spent considerable time on this entire project. This is one technicality on the way to, uh, having a project where we thoroughly approve of go forward. I would like to see us do this as expeditiously as possible. The town does have a real benefit as Mr. Amet has described and to, uh, to smooth the way to, uh, make, give him this technical fix that preserves rights that he had when they began on it so long. They wouldn't even need to be doing this if there hadn't been such considerable obstacles put in the path of the project.
Okay. Um, we do have a number of comments that have come through the chat. If I could have Michaela again.
I'd be happy to take those if you would.
Oh, that's fine, Tom.
Uh, so I've had a couple of emails with, uh, uh, David Epstein, and he is again, uh, in the chat room, um, and had commented earlier, uh, so from, uh, David Epstein of, uh, fifteen Fern Lane, I believe it is. Uh, regarding Woods Hole Partners, five thirty-three Woods Hole Road. Uh, one, what is the current, uh, zoning? Two, according to attorney Clower quoted in the most recent Falmouth Enterprise, the subdivision is to grandfather in previous zoning. What zoning does he mean? What aspect of this previous zoning specifically does Woods Hole Partners seek to maintain in place? Or what is the aspect of the zoning? Why is this aspect of the zoning important to their development proposal? Further, five, if seeking a subdivision in a resident into residential lots, shouldn't the zoning be RAA? Question mark. Quoting from the Falmouth zoning code two forty-one nine, permitted residential uses A, one family detached houses, dot, dot, dot. Thus rezoning into RAA obliterates the possibility of multifamily condo buildings on the current proposal. Six, and further, if a change to single-family zoning is allowed, which would be necessary under this provision to subdivide, quoting Falmouth code two forty eighteen point one multiple units. This section shall not be construed to prohibit any property owner from conducting a use allowed by right in the zoning district provided that any existing use approved by special permit on the same lot is abandoned. My emphasis. Seven, table this proposal until the ongoing court challenge is resolved. Although I fully expect the planning board to dig itself even deeper into the hole of the wrong-headed action on this parcel, let remind the planning board that the special permit granted by the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals remains under challenging court and on the basis of that purely residential character of the proposed development. And this proposed subdivision do not meet the stated purpose of that current zoning, which is quoted from the Falmouth zoning code two forty-two forty. B Z R A. The purpose, purpose of this zoning is to promote this article to promote the zoning of revitalization of commercial centers into mixed-use development, integrating retail, office, restaurant, and community service uses in housing. Again, no commercial development whatsoever, no mixed use. This zoning cannot be applied either to proposed development or to this proposed subdivision, which require the given lots specified RAA. Sincerely, David A. Epstein, fifteen Fern Lane.
Were these covered under his chat comments, Tom?
Those were his chat comments that were specifically, uh, written. I would venture to say, uh, you know, given, uh, uh, that we would likely forward these onto the applicant and make sure they make those, uh, those, those points, uh, uh, as, uh, as, uh, I believe this Dr. Epstein, uh, requested. Uh, I can tell you that the property is zone business redevelopment, uh, and in, in the initial questions, uh, and the grandfathering, they're looking to grandfather, and once again, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob. Is the change at town meeting regarding that top floor, that use of that half story?
Well, I need to correct you there, Tom, because although that would be, uh, protected against the zoning, uh, the filing of the plan freezes the zoning with respect to, um, all changes that, uh, might be proposed, uh, that would affect the property during the next, during eight years from the, uh, time of endorsement.
Steve corrected that.
So we don't, we don't know what those changes, uh, might be. We only know that the developer has undertaken tremendous expense over the past, uh, couple of years. Um, in anticipation of developing the property and is entitled under state law to have this zoning freeze so that the, uh, rights associated with the property are not taken away, uh, during a period of development. Um, and, uh, we, we don't know, uh, when we'll be able to go forward with this project, or if this is the project that will ultimately built, be built on, um, the site. We're simply freezing the zoning so that we have our options. By the way, the developer can always elect to, um, uh, proceed under the then-current zoning. The developer then has an option.
Okay. There's another chat comment that has just come through, Tom.
That is from Greg.
Believe so.
Uh, a, from Greg to all panelists, a forty-three unit apartment complex dropped into the middle of downtown Woods Hole. Dot, 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 sounds like a big change to Woods Hole, one hundred yards from the drawbridge, forty-three units. What's the estimated number of residents?
That was one earlier. This is a new one that just came in.
So we also have from David Epstein, uh, and is inclusive of the chambers right-of-way.
The plan shows the chambers right-of-way. It doesn't affect that whatsoever.
Right.
And additional chats from, uh, Dr. Epstein, uh, at eight forty-nine. The developer is trying to preserve a very questionable decision to allow the full third floor or mass state code limits a third floor to fifty percent of the floor below. Town clearly moved to keep this from happening in the future, so the developer is trying to hold on to the, that moment in history in order to keep a full third floor.
Okay, I'm, at this point, I think I'd like to suggest, and I need the concurrence of the board to do so, that there a lot of things that need to be filled in here. Bob was talking about them, Matt was talking about them. And we've probably gone as far as we can go this evening with this before we get more input. What does the board think about it? What do you think about that, Tom? Tom?
Pardon me, I was, I was reading. Uh, I, I believe you were, I, I believe you asked the board, uh, how the board feels about.
About moving on from this, um, the definitive plan discussion tonight because there's a lot more information that needs to be brought into this. And perhaps bring it up again. Would you suggest like, I don't know, July, what, fourteenth, twenty-eight?
Well, uh, once again, uh, you know, we, we hope to be back to some sense of normalcy, uh, uh, sometime, if there's such a thing, uh, in July with full staffing and things like that in order to, uh, you know, uh, move, uh, some of these things we've got, uh, for us. Uh, so I would recommend, uh, a continuation into, uh, uh, the July, uh, the, the second July meeting.
That's the twenty-eighth, I think you said.
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth.
And I will be happy to forward, uh, the various comments and emails I've received, uh, from, uh, these folks, uh, uh, to the board and to the applicant as well, uh, so they can address any of those concerns, uh, identified by the folks here.
Yeah, I think so. Uh, I think that would be a good thing, and Bob indicated that the engineering, uh, report just came through to them, so they've got a lot to answer there. Almost as like would, it would be counterproductive for us to continue this evening. Does the board agree to that?
Great.
Yes.
Okay. So may I have a motion, please, to continue this, uh, definitive plan application to July twenty-eighth?
So moved.
Is there a second? No second?
You're all on mute.
Yeah, you're on.
Second.
Okay. Any objections to this? If not, please show your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, and Jim is all mute and gone, so there's six of us.
I'm recused from this meeting. I just left the room.
Okay, so six, the seventh one is recused from the meeting. You didn't mention that, Jim, so I'm sorry. And thank you all for being here tonight, and I look forward to further discussion of this.
Thank you all.
We're going to July when?
I'm back.
Twenty-eight.
All right, July twenty-eight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks so much.
No, I'm sorry. I realized about five minutes into discussion that I shouldn't be in the room.
All of a sudden, I saw you disappeared.
So I left, yeah.
Okay. Um, the next issue is public discussion. The applicant is Jeffrey Bright, site plan review application for a detached accessory apartment located at thirty-two Walker Street, Warwick and Associates.
Uh, if, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I would like to, uh, uh, recognize, uh, the, the, just the tremendous amount of work that Michaela and Melinda have both been doing, uh, in, uh, in our, in our short-staffed, sort of COVID-centric sort of world we're in right now. Uh, the planning office has been very engaged in writing grants, uh, through, for relief for COVID and for trying to open restaurants. We've got about twenty-four applications in right now for outdoor seating for restaurants. So there's a number of things where we just frankly haven't had the time to, to, to get to. Uh, this is not one of them, thirty-two Walker Ave, where we have been trying to work through, uh, some of the issues in communicating with the building department. But at the same time, the building department is short-staffed with some of their help being out COVID-related as well. So the application that we have before you is, uh, as some folks have pointed out, doesn't seem quite ready for primetime. Uh, I am going to, uh, uh, turn this over to Michaela, and I believe we have in the audience, uh, Mr. Bright, if I could get Jeff Bright, if I could get, uh, Thomas to elevate, uh, Mr. Bright to a panelist. Uh, I don't know that there, anyone else, uh, in the, uh, in, in the gallery right now. Uh, it's germane to this, but if Mr. Bright wants to identify anybody else who should be brought along with them, uh, he should. It's a particularly unusual project, uh, because of the size of the unit, the number of things that are on it. Uh, and with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Michaela.
Okay. Go ahead, Michaela.
Um, yeah, so this is a, a little bit of an interesting application. Um, there are already existing structures. Um, unfortunately, as Tom mentioned, um, with building being short-staffed, we weren't able to get clarification as to when some of these existing structures were built and kind of the pre-existing nature of them. Um, so having said that, the applicant is applying for, um, the, I just want to make sure that I get the language for the different structures correct. So there is an existing cottage, guest house, excuse me, and the applicant is applying for the attached cottage that, uh, is on the garage.
Okay, Jim?
Oh, one of the things that I asked for before we go too much further, that I really question the adequacy of this site, and I really think we need to have, um, a lot coverage ratio calculation. This, we already have an accessory structure not approved on the site, but there's already one cottage. So we would actually be, if we did this, we'd be applying for two. And I also have serious questions on the math. I have pointed out before, the initial paragraph represents the existing structure being one thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet. And I can't get to that number at all. I have sent in calculations to staff saying if they wanted to come with me, but I believe they're not doing the math properly, and it's really hard to have an application with a bogus number on the front page. If you would try to compute and show how you get that seventeen fifty-one, I don't think you can do it.
That number is the principal structure.
I'm saying how you measure the principal structure. Whoever did the multiplication is taking a number like thirteen and a half feet. And it's, it's thirteen feet, six inches. They're doing the math wrong. You're supposed to, to, uh, digitize or, or take the, the inches, you're, you're multiplying inches in square feet. It doesn't work. You, you, it's got to be done numerically. The math is wrong. If you try to do the math, you won't get that number. I'd like you to see how you do it. And it's on the front page, and I find a hard time, a report that's been sent out three times with the wrong number for the existing structure, right on the initial report.
I was, uh, back and forth with the administration regarding that matter, and I did.
Excuse me, Mr. Bright, would you identify yourself?
Hi, sorry. Yes, uh, Jeffrey Bright. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Henry and Michelle Ayers at thirty-two Walker Street.
Well, I can go over the math with, if you want. The, the plan shows twenty feet point five, I mean, the plan shows twenty feet, six inches times forty feet, six inches, and they multiply the inches and they come with eight hundred and thirty-six. The way it should have been done is twenty feet, point five feet, and forty point five feet, and getting eight hundred and thirty. So you're gaining six feet every time you do the math because you're not doing it properly. I pointed this out a couple of weeks ago, and I said, you gotta do the math right. Using the existing plan and the way I do mathematics, I come up with a seventeen forty-four point three one, not seventeen fifty-seven. You're, you're multiplying half a feet, and it should be point five, not six inches. You're gain, you're gaining ground every time you do it. I don't know why it's being done that way. I pointed it out two weeks ago. I also think the site having, already having an existing cottage on the site and wanting to put another one, I don't believe the site is adequate, and I'd like to see lot coverage ratios calculated. So I'd like to go back and make the math right, do the inches to decimal conversion, get the math properly, and say that you really want to end up with two cottages on this site. One of them approved and one of them pre-existing non-conforming. I think you're not clear on that, and that's why I said this isn't ready. It's a very small site.
I, I, I understand that, um, there are the two cottages in question, um, one of which was the intent to apply to.
So you want to keep both of them though, right?
Uh, well, as far as the.
Have one approved.
As, as far as the habitable, uh, quote-unquote, guest house in the back center of the lot, um, that was, my clients were perfectly willing to just repurpose that. They're not intent on using it as a habitable space. That definition on the pot, on the plot plan was generated from previous record.
So how would they repurpose it, Mr. Bright?
Uh, for office use or storage?
That's not what the application says. It calls it a guest house.
Well, there's also a lot more that I found basically wrong with it just looking at the property. You need parking. And there's inadequate parking. We, uh, we, for the accessory apartments, we need to have adequate parking. There would be two for the main house, two parking spots for the main house, and at least one for the accessory, since it was planned, it was described as being an efficiency apartment. And, go ahead.
I had sent in an updated plot plan with two arrows indicating parking for the, uh, accessory structure with the attached garage.
Yeah, I saw that, but where's the parking for the main house?
Next to the right of it, closer to the main house.
Okay.
The driveway is, were about nineteen and a half feet wide by about fifty feet long.
Yeah, I know, yeah. And also, the other problem I have is that it's on septic system, not on sewer, and that's a very, very small lot. I don't see where there could possibly be a reserve for the septic system.
That was one discussion I had with the surveyor, uh, and it, and it was an assumption of mine that that would come up at this meeting as to, um, what the board's recommendation would be about that. Um, according to the Board of Health in the report, in the staff report. as far as capacity was, was fine. So I, you know, I was more or less looking for advisement from the board on that.
Well, if the system fails, there's absolutely no place to put a new system. That's the problem. And you can't connect up to the sewer because as far as I know, there's no sewer right there.
And, and this is clearly showing two cottages on, and a, and a single-family home on a less than eight thousand square foot lot. And I don't believe they've shown the parking. I just think it's not ready. I think we could put an accessory apartment on here, but maybe the existing cottage has to go away. And then, and, and then if they show parking, there's a way to do it. I'd love to see an accessory apartment. But I think what they're trying to do, they got a pre-existing non-conforming, or maybe an illegal structure with, with no history of permitting, sitting on the property line, not conforming, they want to keep that, call it a cottage, put it on the site plan, and add another cottage. This bylaw does not allow for two accessory units, units on the site. I just think it's not ready. They need more guidance to clean it up.
Correct, and I was, I was informed that there, based on a property file, that there was permitting on that building for door installation.
I don't understand. There was a permit for door installation?
Yeah, I think, I think the gentleman was implying that it could possibly be an illegal structure. The garage with the attached cottage, with the attached living space in question. But I don't have it right in front of me, but I did find on the property file that there was, permit was drawn on that for improvement some time ago. I believe it was two thousand and one.
Really?
I think so.
Is there any permit for the guest cottage that's labeled on the site that hasn't gone away?
Not, not that I'm aware of, sir.
So what, in, in essence, what you want to end up with is an approved accessory apartment and an unapproved guest cottage and a single-family home on a seven thousand or almost eight thousand square foot lot, and a garage?
Well, the garage would ultimately be altered, but I'm not, not inquiring about the guest house in the back center. I was also looking for the board's advisement on that item, which you seemed to be clear on.
I've got some general problems too much on a small lot. Okay, I don't know the rest of the board. I'm sorry, I just kind of butted in. I don't usually do that. I let the board usually speak first. Pam?
Well, it's, I, I drove over there. I think it's, it's overbuilt for the site. And the fact that it's got really now an illegal structure concerns me. And I think there's a lot of work that has to be done before we actually take this on. And it looked like Rod was not able to make a comment on this.
Correct, unfortunately, he was not able to make a comment on this.
And I'd like to wait until we get his comment before we do anything else. It's just, the last thing in the world I want to see is a small house, or any size house, on a relatively small lot with an accessory apartment, another building, yet to be seen what's going to be done to it. If there was a plan that was going to remove one of those buildings and then redo the other building, but it's a very, very tight lot. And I'm concerned, as Pat is, about a septic. So I, I think there's work to be done, and we shouldn't do anything with it right now.
So where we are, I think is, this is me talking, I don't know whether Tom would agree or not, or Michaela would agree or not, but I think it should be withdrawn because as it stands, I think we'd have to just turn it down on its face. It's not, as Jim said, it's not ready for primetime.
I agree with Jim.
Yes, Charlotte?
And when and if it comes back, I think a, a really careful reading of the, of the bylaw for accessory structures would be in order because it, it doesn't meet the requirements in a number of respects as far as the appearance of it, the number of bedrooms. It's just, you need to really look at that, that bylaw as you're thinking about what to do next.
That's why I suggested withdrawing it.
Yeah, I agree.
Bob?
Well, one of the things that we talked about when we proposed this bylaw was bringing the illegal ones into compliance. And I would just hate to cut this loose because you say whether we see this or not, we may not see it. And, and I, I think we missed an opportunity to make something comport to the bylaw and make it legal for the homeowner. And I, I think, yeah, we send them back to the drawing board to come back with something that we could possibly agree to. Whether it's raising the guest house that's off in the corner so there's more room for an improved septic system, whether it's raising the attached cottage to the back of the garage and doing something with that. I think we should encourage the applicant to, to come up with something that we can work with rather than just saying, well, it's not ready for primetime and we don't want to deal with it, maybe they'll come back.
John, do you have any comments on this?
Well, the thing, excuse me, and the fact that the structures are already existing there, he's not asking to put in a new structure. And regarding the septic, and he has to get through the Board of Health for how many bedrooms are on the site. So he'll have to have a plan that they approve no matter what, what we do here, so. But I think he should clean it up and come back and see us and try to do something that can be approved.
That's, that's what I meant by withdrawing it. I don't know if that's the appropriate mechanism, but.
No, I understood, I understood what you meant.
Okay, because right now we have a, like a forty-five day hiatus, but I don't know when that's going to be over. And I'd hate to have to turn something down because it doesn't comport with the bylaw.
Well, I mean, immediately upon, you know, analyzing it, it's clear, I mean, with the, the lot coverage and setbacks, you know, and, and the kind of mystery presence of that guest house in the back of the yard, which is somewhat odd and misplaced. You know, I mean, I think the overall lot coverage is thirty-five percent, you know, which is obviously well beyond, you know, the, you know, the bylaw standard. So as far as looking into a septic upgrade, obviously I would do some digging on that. I was more or less going in accordance with, you know, what the, what the Board of Health was, you know, deeming as present because, you know, I, that's kind of where I was going from at this point before making, you know, making an overall plan. If had it been a, a new structure, you know, that's typical, the avenue, typically the avenue I would take, given that it was the renovation of an existing building. That's, I was looking for the board's advisement on that first.
And this would be a perfect situation to put a second story on the garage.
Right.
I, as far as comporting with the, the local comprehensive plan, I mean, it's downtown. It's a lot of everything, it's a small lot.
Absolutely.
So it, it's a great location for an accessory apartment. When I first moved to Falmouth, I lived at seventy-nine Walker. And I, I walked everywhere, rode my bike everywhere. It's a great location, and I, I would like to see something happen with that. It, it's, it's something that we want to see.
Do you currently live there, Mr. Bright?
I'm sorry?
Do you currently live there in the main house?
No, no, I'm, I'm representing the homeowner.
Okay. Yeah.
I just wanted to say, I just want to say, if, if they were to remove the, the little teeny two hundred square foot cottage and come back with an accessory, only one accessory apartment on the site, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I do think they got to do the math right. You can't, they should, decimals you multiply, inches you don't. You get the wrong result if you don't do the right math.
Yeah.
Yeah, the reason I was asking you this question, Mr. Bright, is the staff report says that the applicant is you, and it says owner, same as above.
I, you know, I saw that as I was viewing the sessions tonight, actually. I got right to the meat and potatoes of the staff report when I received it, you know, from administration, and I didn't even realize that at the top of the page. On my application sheet, you know, the property owner, Henry Ayers, name and sign.
And do they live there full-time, year-round?
They do, they do. They were, he actually, he's a, he's a full-time resident there. He works at the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute.
Okay, Tom?
I just wanted to say that this, this, this is a product of just our current working environment. Typically, when we're fully staffed, people are reading the staff reports, one person's writing them, one person's proofing them, and we're just down people in order to try to go through the normal process that we do. So this is just, as I said, we are, you know, just very busy, shorthanded, and not able to provide the typical level of, of, of information the board is, is familiar with. And my apologies to some extent for that, but we're dealing with the hand that we're dealt with.
Yeah.
In a couple of, in the staff report, so my apologies for that.
Like my limited time with my math. Totally understandable. No apology necessary, believe me. I'm sure it's the same pretty much for everybody, so.
One other thing, if you, if you're going directly representing somebody, I believe you need to have, there's an affidavit that you get at the town hall, and the owner signs it and allows you to represent them in front of all the boards.
Correct.
You, you should have that.
Yes, I believe that's the document. I'm quite certain that's a document that was filled out, yes.
Okay, if you have that. Anyways, if you, I'm all set, if you can deal with, I'd love to see an accessory apartment on the site, but not with, not two.
Perfect. It's perfect location.
Absolutely.
Town and schools and shopping, and it's perfect, but we got to make it work.
Sure, sure.
Tom?
So just to clarify for me, because we've had a couple of different takes, are we encouraging Mr. Bright to request removal of his application without prejudice? Or are we considering a continuation to some point in the future?
Right now, my feeling is remove it without prejudice because there's, I think, sufficient. But if Mr. Bright thinks that he can make all this happen within, I don't know, a month, maybe? I don't, again, we don't have a timeline on this right now that we have to make happen. At least it's not on my agenda sheet.
We have until, the, the clock has stopped until forty-five days after the state of emergency. So when the application came in, that timeframe that we have for applying, that clock will start forty-five days after the lifting of the state of emergency. So I'm going to say it's two months, a month out at this point, when the clock starts again. I think, given the difficulties of the staffing levels in a couple of different departments, the most prudent thing might be to, to ask to withdraw the application without prejudice. File again, and in typical fashion, when the board has done something like this, they waive any additional filing fee.
Does that make sense to you, Mr. Bright?
Sure, and I will obviously confer with my clients. You know, if it's the advisement of the board, then I will take it.
Yeah, we would like to see this happen.
Yeah.
As would I.
Yeah.
I mean, they have to know that we want to see it happen, but it has to happen right.
The only, yeah, and the only other, as you say, the other option would be to present plan to remove, remove that one structure. And what would be the other thing you're looking for? A plan for a future septic?
We usually, when they're on septic, you have to have, like a fail-safe. I, it's getting way.
The reserve.
Thank you, the reserve.
But you're also not allowed to have structures within ten feet of them, so.
Right.
Once you get that other cottage out of the middle of the backyard, it, it, things work a lot better. I mean, I, you know, I, I can understand why you want to have it. But I can tell you, I've gone to the zoning board for many times for changes in lot coverage. And if they give you anything, they want that shed off the property. They always make you take the shed off. So that's nothing more than a shed that you're calling a cottage. I don't know, you know, if you want a real cottage in the back of the garage, make that other thing go away, and we could send it to the ZBA, and they'll, they may or may not approve it, but they won't approve this.
And Bob, Bob Leary's suggestion too, you could always put a second story on the garage.
That could be somewhat challenging. You have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and you may, you'd be really hairy that you're not hitting the, the non-conforming, expanding it by building it. I'm not going to render an opinion. That's tough.
Okay.
Yeah, originally I had, I had thought about that, but, you know, given added height to the building and the butters, you know, you know, wouldn't necessarily want to ruffle any of those feathers either. So it was kind of a, you know, with, with that, with that, that third building back there, you know, I kind of looked at it as we're not touching it, and, you know, that, that, the building in question, with the garage, it's in, it's in poor shape.
Yeah, it, it looked to be when I looked at it.
And it's, you know, you know, so it's kind of one of those things where, you know, I thought, get to it, and, you know, if there's something that has to go, then, like you say, you know, it's back to the drawing board on that. Got to get rid of it, you know, we'll see how that goes, but.
Tom?
Well, given that Mr. Bright isn't authorized to withdraw the application, I would suggest the board continue it to a date certain that Mr. Bright can consult his client. And then in the interim, they submit a letter to the planning office requesting the withdrawal. I will inform the board at that point at the continuation that we've received that request for a, a withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, so the board wants to continue this to, what, July fourteenth to give Mr. Bright some time?
Yes, so I'll move that.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, thank you all very much, and thank you, Mr. Bright. We'll look forward to meeting with you again.
And as will I, and thank you to the board.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
We have planning board discussion report on May fourteenth, ZBA meeting regarding Sunrise Estate bonus lots slash Shamsey request. Tom, you're on for that.
Yes, if I may. So Charlotte and I both attended the May fourteenth zoning board of appeals meeting on the Sunrise Estates bonus lots for Shamsey. There wasn't much discussion, particularly from Charlotte, and I felt very badly that she was out late at night on Zoom like I was. And at least I got to say something, but Charlotte was, was, was prepared, but didn't, wasn't able to speak. The, the applicant's attorney questioned an open meeting law violation because she had not seen a confidential memo from town council on legal advice. The chairman of the ZBA decided to opt for, well, let's get an advi, some, get some advice from council on what's up with that, and we'll continue with on till a, a future meeting. Town council has since opined, no, there's no open meeting law, the advice of council is not a public document and not necessary to be shared with the applicant. However, the zoning board of appeals did vote to release that information to the applicant, who now has it in their hands, and they are scheduled to come back for the zoning board of appeals meeting on June twenty-fifth. We notified the folks at Falmouth Housing Trust just that we would be, this would be on the agenda to discuss this. We got an email, and this is all happening, today is Tuesday, the ninth, correct?
Yes.
So as of sometime this morning, we got an, an email, Melinda did. Yes, and I was copying on, from Laura Moynihan, saying, thank you, Melinda. The Falmouth Housing Trust has not been able to secure an extension for Mr. Shamsey of the building, of the permit receipt deadline under the agreement to accommodate the next ZBA date of July twenty-fifth. This may or may not be relevant to the board, but I would, thought you would have the notice of it as a courtesy in any event. At that point, I asked Bob Amen, just checking in to see if there was still something to talk about with the ZBA on the twenty-fifth. And Bob Amen, as of one twenty-two this afternoon, noted that Sunlight LLC, which is Mr. Shamsey's operation, Sunlight LLC offered Falmouth Housing Trust an extension on terms Mr. Shamsey felt were fair and reasonable. We hope that an extension will be agreed upon and that, on that July, June twenty-fifth, the Board of Appeals will vote to grant the housing trust application. We think that the opinion Frank Duffy issued to the ZBA on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty released by the vote, vote of the ZBA supports that the ZBA can grant that request. And we think that such would be very much in the public interest. On the attached copy of Frank's opinion, which I have not clicked on because I've not had a chance to read Mr. Ament's attachments uh, to this, uh, on the attached copy of highlighted relevant sections, Frank indicated to the majority of the municipal council, he heard from agreed that the appropriate remedy in this case would be the very type of petition that the ZB, with the ZBA that we filed. We think that the quotes from Bob Babowski that Frank cites also supports the application to the ZBA. The prior correspondence that I gave you copies of, Attorney Moynihan and I separately showed that the subdivision is a pre-existing non-conforming use such that conditions for building of the bonus lots may be modified by the ZBA. Sixteen lots in the subdivision have been built upon and without the special permit, lots nine and ten could not be built on. Such a special permit can no longer be granted following the two thousand nine amendment to the zoning board of appeals. The non-conformity is clear. Yours, Bob Ament. Uh, I will note that Bob Ament, uh, and perhaps Laura Moynihan both believe that there is an issue of non-conformity here. Uh, but town council nor the staff, the zoning administrator nor the town planner believes there's a non-conformity here. And likely this would come back to the planning board as we had previously discussed as a possibility. Uh, that concludes what I have to say about the update on Sunrise Estate.
And John, you have a comment or a question?
I just have a question. Excuse me, since the zoning board, uh, made Mr. Duffy's memorandum, uh, I don't wanna say public, made it available to their members, can we get a copy of the same memorandum in case it does come back in front of our board?
Absolutely.
Cause I think what you just gave was a, a summary. I'd love to see the memorandum.
So per, uh, Mr. Duffy's, per, per Mr. Duffy's memo, this is for staff and not a, 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 a public document, so. While I had mentioned it to, uh, the chairman pri- prior to, uh, the ZBA meeting, uh, I did not share the document even with the chairman of the planning board because that was the advice of council that it was.
I understand it, but somewhere we received an email from you that was your summary of this.
Correct, it was my, it was my memo.
Right. I was wondering if we can get the full, at some point get the full memorandum from this.
Absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay, next is Union Studios, meeting schedule and process during COVID nineteen. That's you again, Tom.
Already, I had a meeting, uh, a Zoom meeting with the folks at Union Studios, uh, prior to my departure on my, uh, my FMLA trip, uh, in my return to Massachusetts and my current, uh, self-quarantine. I'm not in the office and my notes from that discussion are in my office, so frankly, I can't report specifically on that. But the discuss, discussion we were having is that in the COVID nineteen landscape, those things that we previously had anticipated doing as far as public outreach, uh, really don't work very well now. And so what are our options and what are our, uh, our opportunities for that? Uh, and so with the board's indulgence, I'll bring that back at the next meeting when I have my notes with me. Uh, and I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. Bad Martha Administrative Approval Request, uh, Tom has gotten a, a note saying, "Take us off because they're gonna have seating outside under the new," uh, go ahead, Tom.
So, uh, when people were first discussing, uh, having outside seating for restaurants, and let me point out that Bad Martha's is not a restaurant, it is a brewery. But because they have a license for a full kitchen, uh, they would, uh, basically qualify, uh, same as a restaurant was. At the time I was originally having this discussion with Mr. Bloom, we really didn't have a mechanism for expediting permitting for outdoor seating. And with the governor's COVID nineteen order number thirty-five, uh, we do now have an expedited process and we have twenty-one applications as of today that we are vetting through the selectman's office to provide outdoor seating. With that, Bad Martha didn't come back to the planning board to look at amending their site plan. Uh, they are on, will likely be in the queue as soon as they send something in to allow outdoor seating, uh, on their property. Outdoor seating under the COVID nineteen thirty-five order is about table service and, uh, food and drink together. So there will not be people just sort of meandering around the site and having a beer as you typically would at, uh, 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 one of these sort of breweries that are, are very popular places. So if they submit their application, it would be for seating with waitress service. We've already informed them that, uh, bocce that's, court has already been removed, but the bag ball games and cornhole games and all those other sort of things will be boxed up as well. And the only option they will have, uh, through this season is outdoor seating with restaurant services, assuming that they're going to submit something to the board of selectmen. But I've had a number of emails and a couple of conversations with those folks, so we're anticipating that, so short story is Bad Martha is not on your agenda for this evening. Last thing for the evening, future agenda items. Uh, we just haven't had a chance to put that together for you, what our schedule is.
Okay.
I, I've been back for eight days and have been pretty much COVID-centric and, uh, to, uh, and apologize to the board for not having some of those things you typically would see.
Fine. John?
A question. There's been a lot of comments tonight about staffing and not being able to get into town hall. What is the staffing situation right now? Are people working full-time, part-time?
People are working full-time remotely.
You're working at town hall or?
Pe- people are working full-time, uh, remotely. Uh, I have been going into the office every day prior to my, uh, to my, uh, family medical leave trip to Florida. But I'll be back in the office on a full-time basis on, uh, on Monday. Uh, Melinda is in the office, uh, every day. Uh, Michaela is working remotely. Uh, Cory is on, uh, FF CRA leave, the federal leave, uh, because they could not make an accommodation for his schedule. Uh, his wife, as I pointed out before, is a doctor in a hospital. He has a ten-year-old daughter at home. And the law provides that people can take leave from their job, get sixty-six percent of their pay, uh, and not have to take, uh, vacation time, sick leave and things like that. So in our office, we don't have Cory and haven't had Cory since, uh, the third week of March. Uh, and so the support we've been providing the best that we can to the historic commission, uh, those things that typically, M- Michaela, as I said, has been doing an amazing job for a person who works three days a week, uh, in, in, and, and, and getting product cranked out as best that we can. So we're making do in some offices, there are people, and I don't know the particulars in the building departments we talked about. There's a couple admins missing in the building department, but essentially under the rules of engagement, if you've been exposed or you've been advised by a doctor, uh, you don't come in. And so I don't know what the circumstances in everyone's office is, but we have since, uh, and I don't know the specific date in front of me, but let's say the third week of March, first week of April. Uh, we've been, me, uh, Michaela and Melinda. And then I took those, uh, that time off to go out and see my mom, and so we lost, uh, uh, you know, two weeks there. I left after the ZBA meeting. Uh, so we're just trying to get caught up with things. But frankly, our full priority right now is on trying to get restaurants allowed to do outdoor seating. So those restaurants can open up here for their high season and get as many diners as they can on the property to sustain those businesses. So as of tomorrow morning, when I, uh, get up and commute all the way across the hallway to my office here, uh, I'll be reviewing, uh, restaurants and restaurants and restaurants and getting those comments out to the selectmen, so those folks can uh, hopefully get their ticket punched, uh, prior to this weekend. The town manager has asked us to provide our comments back on these things. So I will be all COVID all the time, starting again tomorrow, uh, with the things that we've gotta do, so, you know, the, the, the governor gave us the ability, uh, to to, uh, not act on things if we don't have proper staffing levels due to COVID nineteen, and that's the condition we are in now because Cory's on the FF CRA leave. Uh, you're just in that circumstance, so we're doing the best that we can to move things and get things done. Um, and, uh, fortunately, everybody's healthy, at least everybody in our office. Uh, and on the rules of engagement for opening town hall, I will have a daily log where I will be asking all my staff, "How are you today?" Oh, really? "How are you today? Have you been exposed to anybody with COVID? Did you have a high temperature today?" And I'm expecting to keep a daily log to make sure that, you know, we have a safe workplace for that. I'll be having some training on that on Friday, so that's been sort of the, uh, and, and, and frankly, if I didn't go to Florida to help my mom, uh, we'd probably be in a better circumstance. Uh, but that was the best use of my time, uh, in my opinion, and everybody seemed to agree with that, and I appreciate that consideration uh, from both management and from, uh, the board understanding about my personal circumstance. And, and mom is fine, and if she knew you, she would certainly send her love to you. She's a lot like me, she's kind of a card. She got some personality and, uh, uh, I, I, I got a great picture of me wearing my long-sleeved shirt that I specifically kept in her bedroom. I would take a shower, I'd put on my long-sleeved shirt, I'd put on my mask to give her a hug, and we would do that twice a day while I was doing cooking and cleaning, relieving my brothers and demolishing a cast iron bathtub to put her walk-in shower in for the contractor, so. It was a fun visit, it was a sad visit. I slept in a tent out in the backyard in Florida in May, didn't wanna be in the house with everybody else. Uh, it's a trip I'll be talking about for a while and people will go, dude, we know, we don't wanna hear about it anymore, so. I'm all done.
Very much, appreciate it.
Okay, so we're getting on in time and we moved the reorganization to the end. I mean, there's still the announcements, no general correspondence, future agenda items, that. So it's time for the reorganization of the board. Pam?
You're muted, Pam.
Unmute yourself, Pam.
Sorry, I'd like to nominate Pat for another year as chair. Um, I'd like some continuity. Uh, Jim was the chair for four years, for the three years I was on the board and the six months after I'd been appointed to the board. I guess that came first. Um, and I just, I like continuity. I think it's important. Um, and so that's my nomination.
Any other nominations?
Nominate, uh, Charlotte for vice chair and Paul for secretary.
Oh, we're, we're, Bob, we gotta, we gotta stay with one nomination at a time and vote on it, okay? So, okay, I've been nominated for chair by Pam. Any other for chair? O- okay, oh.
You need a second.
Oh, yeah, right. There needs to be a second.
John wants to say something.
I know, I understand that, but there has to be a.
I'll second.
Okay, John?
Would like to nominate Jim. I think Pam's done a wonderful job. I would, I would like to nominate Jim this year.
Okay, is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
Okay, so any other nominations? So right now we've got two nominations. And so I'll call for the vote. I guess I'll call for me first since, um, I was nominated first. So I'll vote for myself. Pam? Any other votes for me? Bob? Paul? Okay, anybody else? So there are four votes. Well, four out of the seven gets it, so I'm assuming John and Charlotte and Jim will vote for Jim. Okay.
Right.
So I'm continuing as chair now. Nomination for.
I want to save our ballots.
Lots of luck thrown by airplane.
We should mail them in.
Yeah.
Okay, so vice chair now.
I'll nominate Charlotte.
Okay. We need a second.
Second.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous for Charlotte for vice chair.
Thank you.
Clerk.
I'll nominate Paul.
Second.
Look at the grimace. Paul, do you accept or not? Okay, so it's been this seconded. All in favor of Paul for clerk?
Aye.
So we're continuing. He's gonna vote for himself with a grimace I didn't know.
Can I mute?
Paul, you're muted.
Maybe he did it on purpose.
It's the first time I got a nomination that was unanimous.
Are you excited about that, Paul? Do you wanna talk about it a little bit?
I don't believe that, Paul. I think it's always been unanimous for you for clerk.
Think so too. All right, so we're continuing with the same, uh, uh, yeah, officers as we've had in the past.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all. Charlotte?
Yeah, Pat, it's, it's sort of in connection with an organization meeting, but it's also about a future agenda item. We've, we've built up quite a backlog of projects and I would like to put on the agenda that we have a discussion, first of all, to list them, just so we can see what it looks like and prioritize them and maybe make a rough stab at a schedule just so we can all get on the same footing to understand where these things are that we've begun and are hanging out there somewhere.
I know, you and I went over that, so.
We did.
And, uh, that would be under future agenda items and Tom, you have that list too.
It would be a real discussion of how to prioritize them and when we can expect something to actually be completed.
So I will do my, uh, very best for our June twenty-third meeting, uh, to have that list of, uh, the projects and things that are going on, both from the planning board's perspective and the, uh, and the, in the, uh, planning office's perspective, uh, cause I've got, you know, while I love you guys and, uh, do anything for you, I, I, I got a few different folks that I'm we're trying to deal with on things. This sort of restaurant COVID nineteen thing being one of those prime examples, but.
That, that is prime and it has to be. That's the economy of the town.
We'll put the big picture, uh, sheet together for you about where we're at and what we've got going on, and we can talk about them in our future meeting.
Okay. Uh, you know, we skipped over, are there any announcements that anybody wants to make?
I, I just have a question. Do, do we have any idea, Tom, when you, you think we might get back into our normal meeting room?
Um, if I have not, I, I don't really have a good sense for that. I, I probably know if I read all the stuff I've been getting emails on, but I haven't had a chance to read all the stuff I've been getting emails on. Uh, uh, one of those things about opening the building is part of this training that I've got coming up Friday to ensure that we've got a safe working place. So I'm sure that's part of the whole, uh, opening up of offices and things like that. I, I, I'm fairly certain I know what that is, but uh, it, you know, at nine whatever time of night, uh, I'm not willing to throw that date out there for being recorded by the press or something like that, but, uh, uh, it'd be swell to be back in the room, uh, but we're still constrained to how many people can be in a room, and if you're in a room with a public meeting and it's limited to ten people, you know, uh, there's it, it, the simple stuff is, is hard.
Yeah, it's not so simple.
And I don't think there's gonna be any decision until Baker comes up with phase three.
Right.
Which is supposed to be in three weeks from now, so I'm gonna just offhandedly think, uh, because of what the legislature is doing as well, that this isn't gonna happen quickly.
That's my thought too, because.
My gut.
What it is is.
Unlike this meeting.
Phase two, and then he, if this works, he goes to the second phase of phase two and then phase three.
So I don't think this is gonna happen anytime before mid-phase three. Because you've got small rooms, you have to be six feet apart, you can only have ten people. And there are seven of us and Tom is eight and Michaela, and you've got the room filled.
And then we don't have any representatives capable of coming in.
That's right.
For, for the applicants, so it's difficult.
Right?
I just jumped in here and, uh, let's, let's move for adjournment. Uh, I spent a lot, eleven hours today working in a very tight cramped space and the meeting here gives me a fifteen-hour day. I'm ready to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Were you by yourself in that cramped space?
Yes, I, I, I put, I put baseboard in a, uh, two-foot by two-foot closet with a eighteen-inch, with a. Yes, I, I put, I put baseboard in a two-foot-by-two-foot closet with a eighteen-inch, with a shelf eighteen inches above me.
Oh, no.
That was one of my tests.
Oh, Bob.
Okay, Bob, I'm gonna.
My back is screaming. I just need.
Yeah.
I'm gonna second your motion.
Yeah, we are, we're adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Sherri. Thank you.